Good evening. I am Trinise Riggs. We're going to call the school board, the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, meeting to order at 6:02 PM on this fourteenth day of November 2023. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, would you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the school board chamber is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
And Ms. Martin had a family medical emergency, so she will not be attending. So would everyone, um, please follow me in the moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance after. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America, a judiciary public for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no student, employee, or public awards this evening, so we're moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and modified. Moved by Mr. Callen and seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Superintendent's report and recognitions. There is no superintendent's report this evening, but Dr. Robertson, do you have any recognitions for this evening?
I do, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure tonight to announce that you've approved our recommendation for Danielle Williams, currently an Assistant Principal at Glenwood Elementary School, to be the next principal at White Oaks Elementary School. No, not yet, Danielle. We see you have some guests. You get to invite, you get to announce your guests. Outstanding. Unable to join us tonight, but I'm pleased to announce that Nicole Livis has accepted our position to be the new Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer in the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, and she'll be joining us officially on November the thirtieth. So, welcome, Nicole. And then finally, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Jennifer Morris, currently an Assistant Principal at Corporateland Middle School, to be the new coordinator in the Technology Academy at Lansing High School. And I know you have some guests.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, I have my amazing husband, Mr. Dwayne Morris. I have my son, Devin Morris, and my other son, Derek Morris.
Thank you. So, you know, we always say to the families, thank you very much, because the time and sacrifice that these individuals put in to serve the students of Virginia Beach and the community is a sacrifice, and I know that's taken valuable time away from you. But we're going to take good care of them, and we're glad they're with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. So we're going to move to the approval of our meeting minutes for the October 24th, 2023 regular school board meeting. Are there any modifications to the October 24th, 2023 regular school board meeting minutes as presented? Okay, hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the October 24th, 2023 minutes as presented. Ms. Manning and seconded by Mrs. Brown. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the October 24th, 2023 minutes as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass.
We are now on public comments, and we will have them until 8:00 PM. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the school board agenda is for the school board to offer an orderly form to receive public comments during the school board meeting. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. The school board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, can you please introduce the first speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a reminder, I will be calling three speakers at a time. Just please line up in the hallway when your name is called. Our first speaker will be Diane Muscovac. Speaker number two had to cancel. It will be Paula Chang and then Matthew Cody Connor. Diane Muscovac?
Good evening. Let's get to the heart of the matter. The lives of our children depend on us getting to the heart of the gun violence in our schools. Currently, schools are reaching or reacting to gun violence across all educational levels by implementing measures such as mandating clear book bags possessing metal detectors, single points of entry most of the time, and security resource officers. What if we took a proactive approach, fostering a change in the hearts from a very early age, say like kindergarten? How do we, how do we do this, you ask? We do this by putting God back in our schools. Teaching students about Christianity and its positive influences on American culture is not only possible, it's legal and a legitimate academic pursuit for public schools. You see, when God left our schools, guns entered. So what if history class went something like this? Let's continue history class with the third president of the United States, Thomas Jefferson. There's a controversy around Jefferson's faith due to the fact that people say he removed the sections out of the Bible that he found troublesome, particularly the sections relating to miracles. After doing this, he put together what is called Thomas Jefferson's Bibles, one printed in 1804 and the other 1821. So how should we view Jefferson's faith and adjudicate where Jefferson was in terms of his belief in God since he cut out of the Bible everything he didn't agree with? Why did he do this? Here's the truth. People tend to look at the product. They don't read what he said or want to understand why he did it. People tend to jump to this characterization based on what they know on the surface level. Jefferson was really close to the Native Americans and wanted to share the Bible with them. The First Jefferson Bible was printed in 1804. A guy named Bennett told Jefferson, "If you wanted to reach Native Americans with Christianity, do not give them the whole Bible, because if you do, they might only read the genealogies, and that's not what you want." He said, "You need to cut, to take the teachings of Jesus and cut them out and only give them the teachings of Jesus." So Jefferson did just that. In the 1804 Jefferson Bible, you find Jesus healing the sick, raising the dead, casting out devils, and all the miracles that he did. In Christian terms, this will be called the Red Letters of the Bible. Jefferson gave Jesus teachings to some missionary friends for the Native Americans. He passed the teachings, he pasted the teachings of Jesus one, one time instead of doing the four gospels. This will be called Synoptic Bible. So this excerpt is a three-minute short story. It will be continued at the December meeting. Until then, my ask is for us to team up and begin to change one heart at a time in order to get to the core of gun violence. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang, Matthew Cody Connor, and then Kathleen Slindy.
Thank you. So each person on, first, I'm going to talk about Bylaw 114. Each person on this board has been elected to sacrifice as a public servant. Elected public servants should never have their compensation to be equal to or replace their main income. Compensation should be modest. That said, I do not see a single member of this board who has not personally sacrificed or financially sacrificed to serve as a member on a board which has not voted itself a salary increase in over a decade. Thus, I strongly support a modest increase in salary for this board. Now to the superintendent's search. Results of the surveys of the 4,423 Virginia Beach stakeholders collected by HYA in the superintendent's search were released, and they show an administration, honestly, that is not in touch with the stakeholders. For example, stakeholder groups were asked if they agreed with certain questions, and here are some of the responses. Are schools safe? The administration, 91% yes. Teachers, 66%. Students, who live it, 40%. Are students on track for the next grade, such as our college or career when graduating? Administration, 83%. Teachers, 53% agree. And students who will live it, 49%. The district, does the district provide compelling shared vision of the future? The admin says 96% yes. The teachers, 80%. Students, 40. Parents, 51. And the community who pay for it, 37. The district is headed, is the district headed in the right direction? The overall score is 47%, with the administration saying 83% yes, while teachers, 58%. Students, 40. Parents, 39. And community members, 28. The results were requests for respondents to rank their top four values out of 12 desired of the school system through the next superintendent, such as, examples are community engagement, fiscal responsibility, which interestingly, only citizens found it significantly important in the top four, as well as communication, and importantly, a high expectation culturally of the students for their culture, a high culture of expectation for the students. This was one of the top four values for the parents, the citizens, and the administration, yet it was not a top four value for teachers and licensed support professionals such as library media specialists or for the students, but that would be expected. These three groups were 56% of survey respondents. Teachers and support staffs such as librarians placed trust in their peers, their school peers, communication, diversity, and staff retention over a culturally high expectation for our students. That's a wow. These attitudes reflect a battered, dispirited system that has lost its way through a lack of solid board and prevailing administrative leadership and that choose social issues over true basic education that you have the responsibility to provide. And I do not see corrections to these in your new leadership profile. Please correct that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor, Kathleen Slindy, and then Pastor Rick Pickens.
Good evening. Here again. You know, I always thought that this so-called war on wokeness and the people like our own wokeness checker, Victoria Manning and her group of Mannians that wage it, it's always incredibly ridiculous. Just this perspective that being awake, aware, informed, having compassion for others is somehow a weakness, something to be attacked. I mean, I've always found the benefits of being woke quite obvious. Actually, something lending to traits that educators especially greatly appreciate. Yes, we read banned books. We ask a lot of questions. We challenge the traditional societal structures. We also are kind to people. We study, pay attention in class. We don't fail open book tests. So when we see history repeating itself, when we see human rights and freedom being threatened, when we see the most vulnerable among us being attacked, we know the right answer is to stand up, speak out, and step in. We understand the assignment. Perhaps if you'd been more focused on education and less focused on religious and political agendas, you would have understood the assignment too, and you would not have failed a test when the answers were literally given to you. Last meeting, I talked about accountability and consequences. Here, just a few short weeks later, we are seeing those consequences play out in force in legislators and school boards across our country. In Pennsylvania, Iowa, Michigan, North Carolina, school board members supported by groups like Moms for Liberty that support discriminatory policies like the ones you just passed, lost en masse. Even here just down the way in Loudoun County, the first school board to enact Governor Youngkin's discriminatory policies in Virginia, every school board member that voted in favor of those policies and ran for reelection, lost. I often come here with facts or statistics.
Thirty seconds.
And even pleas. Today, I come only with fair warning. In the coming year, several of you are up for reelection. I suggest you find something to do with the abundance of free time you will have after that. Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, Pastor Rich Pickens, and then Noah Morland.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Slindy, President of Virginia Beach Education Association. My comments tonight address our school year calendar. Crafting the calendar is a challenging task. One factor to consider is that we are a military-connected community, so we know often military families want to take advantage of being stationed stateside to visit with their family for the holidays. To do this, many families, just, not just those who are military, but many, take their students out of our schools early and return late over the holidays to take advantage of lower-priced fares or less traffic. This impacts student learning as well as the teacher workload because teachers are often asked to provide work for traveling students and then must help students make up work upon their return. It also increases our absenteeism rate, which has been discussed as an accreditation concern in our school board committee meetings. Another consideration for the calendar is the shortage of substitutes on Fridays. Buildings, building in some breaks specifically for these days would ease the pressure on our staff and students, and it would also address concerns about safety of our schools since our buildings would not face the understaffing currently a problem on many Fridays. During the pandemic, we learned the importance of mental health and work-life balance for everyone. Scheduling the traditional holiday breaks so that planned travel could take place without missing school would reduce stress, increase morale, decrease absenteeism, and attract more highly qualified candidates to work and stay in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I started thinking differently about these challenges when a colleague pointed out to me the school year calendar that Franklin City Public Schools adopted after the pandemic and are continuing to use. It has many of these features, and I sent you the link in an email, and I posted it on our Facebook page. They have managed to have regular scheduled student and staff wellness days and regular scheduled half-day release days for students, allowing for shorter but more frequent planning days for teachers. And they have a week for Thanksgiving, two weeks for their winter break, and a full spring break. Obviously, Virginia Beach is not Franklin City. We have different resources and challenges. However, I think it may be worth examining how another Virginia city is trying to improve working and learning conditions through their school year calendar. And finally, at this time of year, when we give thanks for the goodness in our lives, I want to thank you on behalf of the BBEA for your service as school board members. The work you do is not easy. The challenges are great, and the solutions never seem to satisfy everyone, which is pretty much a reality of public service. We share a vision for making the community we live in a better place through our belief in and our support for public education. And for that, we thank you. We offer our support and our partnership, and we wish you a restful and restorative holiday. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pastor Rich Pickens, Noah Morland, then Darrell Clark.
To everyone in this room, I want you to raise your hand if you're born and raised right here in Virginia Beach, and that's school board members included. As expected, not many people raise their hands. But I am. I'm third generation, born and raised right here in Virginia Beach. My grandparents on my mom's side, both my parents, and now myself and my siblings and all of us went through the public school system. And that means throughout my years, I've managed to see the change that has taken place from when my eldest sister went through to when my younger sister went through. We were all in the gifted program. We all joined various different academies in high school, and we all went on to go to college. It's a unique perspective that many other adults here do not have. I've seen the change with my very own eyes, and not for the better. I remember when computers were first introduced into classrooms. They'd bring them in on big carts whenever we had to take tests. In a world where these kids are already on their phones 24/7 outside of school, doesn't it seem strange that we basically made them do the same inside of school? I learned the other day that Virginia Beach only had a 77% passing rate on their math as well. Overall, with all five subjects combined, it was, it was around the same 77, which is rough, in my opinion, but Norfolk only had about a 50% pass rate. So whatever you do, just don't do what Norfolk is doing. But Virginia Beach can be doing better. Take away whatever budget and time people are using to push these crazy ideologies that frankly, I think even most students are tired of having it shoved down their throats, but they just can't say anything unless they be ostracized by their own teachers and administration. And part of this means answering the age-old question that nobody seems to be able to answer. Why is there obscene and pornographic material in the school libraries? No matter who you ask about it, everyone shuts down the instant you bring it up and instantly refuses to talk about it. Bring up the common sense notion that we should just get rid of it, and you get cries of "book-burning fascists." Why? Because there is no defense to the issue at hand. It's not an LGBT issue. It's not a Christian issue. It's a common sense issue, and it is impossible to defend pornography in a government-funded facility, so the only other option is to resort to ad hominem attacks. We didn't start this culture war. We expected the focus to be on education from the start. It was only when we saw education fall by the wayside and being replaced by these cultural issues that we started fighting it. On no world, this one or the next, is it acceptable? And at no point in history have we ever let every single type of book or media or material be shown to underage kids. A Common Sense Media survey found that the average age that most kids were exposed to porn is 12 years old. In a world where underage kids are already exposed to pornography outside of school at an early age, and every single word you might type into a search engine or scroll on social media might present you...
And that is time?
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Noah Morland, Darrell Clark, and Rachel Joyner.
I think that was, that was Noah Morland. And Pastor Rich Pickens was not here. Okay, so if...
He was late.
Oh, he was late.
Yeah. He didn't arrive at his five o'clock. My wife and I were in charge.
Okay, um, so we'll, at the end, we'll let you speak, okay? All right, thank you. So, um, when you come up to speak, I'm just going to ask you, please say your name, so that'll help us out. Thanks. I appreciate it.
My name's Darrell Clark. So when I was at the town hall meeting, I remember a superintendent had said that black students in schools in this city haven't been doing too well, grade-wise. And that, that concerned me more so because of, there was also, he had said that there was more SROs and more armed security officers put into the schools. And to me, that feels like more police added to the schools. Now, like I said last time, most of y'all aren't from marginalized groups. And I know that being black in America, not being safe around police is just a thing. So it could be that they don't feel safe because there's essentially more police in schools. Just something you should think about. And speaking of marginalized groups, with the passing of the model policies, it's like, there's, I've noticed this thing over the past, like, few years that people tend to not listen to the voices of marginalized peoples and oppressed peoples throughout the world. They'd rather listen to ones who aren't directly affected as if they know what they're talking about when they actually, when they actually don't. And that's really concerning. I feel like it should be a no-brainer to, to take what someone is going through historically as the truth, because it's shown throughout history. It's not new. It's not trend. It's the reality of where we live at. It just shows a lack of compassion, a lack of empathy, a lack of respecting someone's humanity.
Thirty seconds.
And it's a real shame that y'all choose not to listen to the youth as if they're not the ones experiencing these things firsthand, like they're making it up or something. I mean, half of y'all look at me with dead eyes anyways, so it doesn't really matter, I guess, at this point. But, um, yeah, I don't know. We'll see what the future holds, but it's hard to have hope, but I still have some.
Our next speaker is Rachel Joyner, Abby Sitarzick, and then Carlos Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Joyner. A couple of meetings back, I stated that I felt like I was screaming into the void coming up to this podium to argue about Youngkin's model policies. And last meeting was proof to me that I and we are actually being listened to somewhat. So thank you for listening. Tonight, rather than cite the same legitimate sources and make the same arguments I've made for weeks now, I like to directly address what some on the opposition has spoken at these meetings. Now, I will not call these speakers out by name or gendered pronouns as I personally feel that this would be respectful, or not be respectful. My apologies. I will simply be using quotes and providing my rebuttals. A speaker who had addressed me by name at the last meeting stated that when I made the direct quote from John 8, "Let he who is without sin cast the first stone," I intentionally left out the remainder of that passage where Jesus chooses not to condemn the woman but to wreck her away from sin. Of course, there's going to be a difference in, of opinion about the sin part. I don't deny that. But my intent in using that quote was to illustrate that by enforcing the 2023 model policies, you actively condemn transgender students for their identity and expression, which goes against Jesus's teaching that you don't condemn others for you yourself are full of sin. This was the parallel I was attempting to draw in using that quote. And I see this may have gotten lost in translation, so my apologies if this was the case. I'd also like to address a couple quotes I found much more alarming from another speaker. One that stated, "There is no such thing as a transgender person/human being because that is impossible." And the other, "It would be preferable if the superintendent was saved by the blood of Jesus Christ, the King of all kings." Regarding the first quote, I'll state that this is, of course, incorrect as I and many others consider ourselves transgender, and we're still humans. If this person is implying that the simple fact about myself and others somehow makes us inhuman, I urge for some clarification from this speaker. Regarding the second quote, I don't think it takes much convincing to highlight that this is a clear declaration of desire to breach the separation of church and state, which is a clear violation of the First Amendment of the United States of America, a country founded on separation from the Church of England. There is no reason why the superintendent couldn't be Jewish or Muslim or Buddhist or atheist or any religious organization other than Christianity that would somehow make them an inferior leader of a secular public school board, all because they are not within your religion, which you clearly see as superior to all of the groups of people. We are already seeing the harm these policies are doing as my heart broke once again here at the last meeting that a student was harassed in a school bathroom, likely from a direct result of these policies passing. These policies are not going to stop these students from being transgender. It will only discriminate against them. These policies do not protect the rights of your children who you want to teach to hate and despise us as enforcement of regulations do not simply erase a group of people like some of you may wish they do. Why? Because we do not live for your approval. We do not live to change your mind. We only live for ourselves.
Our next speaker is Abby Sitarzick, Carlos Taylor, and then Melinda Rogers.
Genesis 1:1. "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth." Psalms 33:12. "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." Psalms 22:27 through 28. "All the ends of the earth will remember the turn, will remember and turn to the Lord, and all the families of the nations will bow down before him; for dominion belongs to the Lord, and he rules over the nations." For those of you who don't know, I'm Abby Sitarzick, and I'm a seventeen-year-old senior in high school, and I am a Christian. I am, I was blessed to be born and raised in a Christian household, and I attend church every Sunday and every Wednesday. I am a follower and a believer of Jesus Christ. I mention this because it is important. Religion has a... Religion has a, has every place in these discussions. Our religion and our beliefs are part of what, are part of what defines us, and are part of what defines us as a person and affects our everyday lives with the way we view and do things. Now, I am aware that the First Amendment Establishment Clause prohibits Congress from making a law respecting and establishing a religion. Yes, yes, I am. I'm aware that Chris- am I aware that Christianity not only, am I aware that Christianity is not the only religion that exists, and not everyone believes in it? Yes, yes, I am. But am I a Christian? Yes, yes, I am, and none of these things can stop me from believing what I believe. I believe Jesus died a gruesome death on a cross and rose again three days later, so we could have a relationship with God. I believe for a fact that he loves me unconditionally and genuinely cares about me. How could I not talk about someone who saved me and completely changed my life? God is the creator of the, God is the creator of the world, and God is the creator of the universe. God is the creator of all living things. Whether or not you believe it, it's up to you. America would not be where it is today if, America would not be where it is today if it wasn't for God. Now, I am not saying we need to force Christianity or religion in, down, or religion in general, down anyone's throats. But what I am saying is that, um, sorry, um, but, sorry, oh my gosh, I lost where I was. America would not be where it is today if it wasn't for God. Now, I am not saying we need to force Christianity or religion in general down anyone's throat. What I am saying is that this is America, and we are one nation under God. And the truth of the matter is that you can't separate the church from the state. For as long as I live, I will proclaim the name of Jesus everywhere I go, and my prayer is that everyone else will too.
Thirty seconds. Our next speaker is Carlos Taylor, Melinda Rogers, and then Blair Gatawski. Carlos Taylor. Melinda Rogers.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you and the community this evening. I'm Melinda Rogers, and I'm a parent of three Virginia Beach City Public School students and a former VBCPS teacher. I'm before you this evening due to my concern over the access teachers and staff have to parental written documentation concerning Division's new model policy, which was mandated by the state. My daughter graduated from the middle school this past June. During her years in middle school, the administration and staff had given her a nickname that reflected her happy personality and the fact that she smiles and laughs a lot, but it was not a derivative of her given name at all. In fact, when I first heard the nickname, I was a bit taken aback and asked her if she was okay with it, but realized that she liked her nickname and enjoyed being acknowledged by the adults in the building for being happy and smiling a lot. As time went on, and I had to pick her up from school, I started asking the security staff for her, not by her given name, but by the staff-given nickname. They would always tell me what a sweet and happy person she was, and what a good kid she was. I loved these interactions between the staff and my daughter. So when the model policy went through, I spoke to many other parents who, like me, wanted to be able to give that permission for their child to use any nickname that the school wanted. I immediately updated parent view to reflect my decision. I put any name in the nickname slot. But then I got a phone call from a school administrator that said if I put that exact verbiage in the nickname space, they would be forced to call my child "any" name. Obviously, this was not my intention, nor do I believe that this was the intention of Governor Youngkin. So I did what any parent would do. I contacted the board and Dr. Robertson to ask if we could have a box to check or a space provided to give permission to allow our children to go by any nickname. Surprisingly, Dr. Robertson's response to me was, quote, "Our student information has a cost." And he then stated he wanted parents to email principals, and that requests from parents would be placed in their cumulative folders instead of in the computer system. This leads me and many other parents that I've spoken to to have a host of questions. Why do we have a computer system that cannot easily be updated? Why are we paying for a system that is too expensive or too cumbersome to update? Why was the system able to be updated in 2020 when parents signed a masking waiver, but it can't be updated for this policy? Has there been a significant cost to the system that taxpayers should be made aware of? Why can't parents simply have a box to check, where we give permission for staff to use any nickname, so that teachers and administrators know what to call our kids?
Thirty seconds.
As former VBCPS teacher, I also know that key folders are kept in the office. How are teachers and staff supposed to access this request if they have to go to the office every time students files are updated? And if this system can be updated, why would the acting superintendent tell a parent that that choice would not be updated in the system? I would highly suggest that the board conduct an audit of parent view and find out what services we are paying for and how much it costs to update. Every parent should have to be able, should be able to put their preference in a place that is easily accessible-
And that is time.
-to staff. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Blair Gatawski, and then Pastor Rich Pickens.
Good evening. My name is Blair Gatawski. I'm nervous, so I apologize. I'm here tonight to speak with you about the duties and responsibilities of staff. "I tickle boys," those are the words said by a VB, Virginia Beach City Public School fourth-grade teacher. When did it become acceptable to use tickling as a form of classroom management and to get students to comply? My son was nine years old when this teacher started to tickle him, to the point he would be on the floor. I am appalled, I am upset, I'm angry that this has gone on. It's, it's... It went on for one year. Our children are taught to speak up when they, they're taught to speak up. When they finally do, they are doubted and asked, "Why didn't you come forward? Why didn't you speak up sooner? Why didn't you tell anyone?" It's a disappointment. We trusted the schools, the school and the teacher. And it hasn't been handled correctly, I believe. It, it's, it hasn't, and I fear for the safety of other children, because this teacher could do it again. And there's nothing guaranteed by anyone. I'm told to send my son to school. He asks me every other night, "Is he gonna be coming back? Is he, is he gonna be at school again?" And I don't know what to tell my son. My son is 10 years old, 11 years old. He was nine years old when this started. He doesn't understand. He was interviewed. I mean, this whole process has been a nightmare. And, I'm sorry. It's upsetting, because it's my son. And there's lots of children involved in this, and I was told, and I was told that, um, you know, we tried to contact some of them, but that's it. I mean, I just don't know how, um, I'm sorry. I wanna be the voice for other children that feel like they can't speak up, because my son spoke up and hasn't been supported-
Thirty seconds.
Hasn't been supported or, or like, checked on or, or anything. It, it's, it's sad. It's upsetting, and I hope that you all hear me tonight and look into it. I don't know if you all are aware or what, but I feel like I had to speak up on it, because children's safety is, should be the most important thing. One of them in, in school, when they go to school, they should feel safe.
Our next speaker is Pastor Rich Pickens.
On behalf of myself, my wife, you can start the time. Thank you for letting me come in a little bit late today. I appreciate it. I originally came to the school board several years back, when the mask thing was going on, and when I became aware of the pornography in the schools. And I was aware that, you know, I had to educate myself, and I've learned what's in the school system, and I realized this is a national problem. And I was looking at some information that's very current from something called the American Accountability Foundation, a conservative nonprofit, and they published a video and a memo this month, which of radical quotes from Emily Durbinsky, who's the president of the powerful American Library Association, and a nonprofit that receives some of its money from, you know, the libraries and, and different ways. And the report documents hers, and she's self-described as a lesbian Marxist. I mean, that's how she defines herself. And so if that's someone who's heading something up, then it doesn't, it's not surprising to me that things are gonna begin to filter down from the head into the school system. And I've talked with my sister, who's in Florida, you know, very small, you know, Brooksville, the land places, and she said, "We're dealing with the same problem." And so I realized that this isn't just an accidental incidental thing that's happening here and there. It's really deliberate on the part of someone to infiltrate and put things into the system that do not belong there. And having looked at the material myself, I, I wish I could say it was just casual, like, oh, it's just something about health, which is what I thought when I saw it. It's just constantly indoctrinating and putting things in front of kids that, that don't belong there. And you'll, you'll notice that when children see their parents kiss, for instance, there's a common thing that a lot of kids will say, and it's usually gross. When they're a certain age, like, gross, you know? But there's also something very healthy about that. Shows there's an innocence that's established in their heart and life. They're not prepared for the things that are being presented in these library systems. There's a lack of mature leadership on either the part of librarians or whoever's supervising this. They, for some reason, think it's okay. And I have talked with several school board, not school board, but people in the school system, presidents, and I'm not gonna mention names, who've told me to my face, "This is not pornography," after we've heard it read here in, in public. So I realize there's a serious problem. We're on a whole different page, but when people expose this, they realize, "Well, this has to be taken out." I know the governor's put in an opt-out program, but that didn't settle right in my heart. We don't wanna opt out.
Thirty seconds.
We wanna have, get stuff out of our system. There's plenty of good literature that needs to be coming. And then I have one more thought. I review all the tapes before I come and speak, and there was something that was spoken the last school board meeting that was very specific, is I thought, "That grandfather's gonna be in trouble when he gets home, because he's dead-named, as they say, one of the students." But when I went back and watched, and I wrote down the name, and I wrote down what he said at the time. But when I went back, I don't think it's a problem, but I knew he would be in trouble. But when I went back and watched the tapes before I came here-
And that is time.
I realized that part was missing from the tapes.
And that is time.
And I'd like to know, do we edit tapes?
And that is time.
I'd like to know more about that. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
We're going to move on to our online speaker. Vic Nichols, please unmute. Ms. Nichols, please unmute. Ms. Nichols, can you hear us?
Virginia, if you could just have a moment.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Nichols, give us a moment.
This is coming on. Can you hear us?
Okay, Ms. Nichols, we hear you now. Please continue.
Well, the, the appointment's going to be split up, so the composition allows the opposition to have control or a say. 14, Consent Agenda 521 and 536. If a student speaks up for the facts, such as one, one young person did in the district saying there were only two sexes, how are items like that going to be treated? The current students speaking first. They need to be crying out on other issues. Holly Bourne is a bestselling, critically acclaimed British author. In a recent newspaper column, she details how porn use among young people is creating a toxic rape culture, one of violent sex that makes life unbearable for teen girls. During every shift as an online sex and relationships advisor for young people, a teen girl went right in, confused and upset, after she'd been pressured, coerced, or forced into having more rougher violent sex, like what boys were seeing in online porn. These girls didn't realize they were describing rape. They just saw non-consensual degrading and painful sex as a normal part of their lives. That's what porn does to young girls. Sexual violence has been mainstreamed by porn. When they started presentations on the issues 10 years ago, choking was unheard of, now it's mainstream. Porn has served as sex ed for an entire generation and rewired their libidos and grooming them to crave and accept sexual violence. Up to nine out of 10 porn films show acts of physical and verbal violence. Women are the targets of this violence 97% of the time. Despite all this, collectively, we have declined to do anything to keep porn away from kids. They grow up thinking porn sex is what sex is. Boys describe pressuring girls until they give in or had sex against their will, or complaining about they wouldn't allow to be raped. Sex expected of teen girls is now more hardcore and widespread free access to free violent pornography is the obvious driving force behind that. It has changed how young people learn about sex. This is what your sex ed, which is basically porn, is doing to girls. It is destroying them, and it destroys kids. Why are you allowing it? Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker this evening.
Thank you. So we are now on information number 12. Our Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee appointments. Welcome, Dr. Lisa Baniki, our Executive Director for Planning, Innovation, and Accountability.
Well, thank you. I'm clicking for myself. Well, good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. I'm here to provide you with the recommendations concerning membership on the Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee that will engage in the development of the next strategic framework. By way of reminder, our local school board policy requires the activation of a Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee one year prior to the end of the Division's strategic plan, in this case, conference to 2025. This group will meet January through June and will work to review community input, data, and educational trends. The goal of this, this is what I get for being short. The goal of this group is to identify priorities and draft a strategic framework that will guide our division in the coming years. The committee members are appointed by the school board based on the recommendation of the superintendent, and the superintendent also designates a staff member to serve as an administrative facilitator to the committee. I've been designated as the staff member to function as the administrative facilitator for this committee. The recommendations I'm about to share for the composition of the Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee represents 34 members. The individuals that you will see listed were selected to represent various internal and external stakeholders, including teachers, parents, students, administrators, business leaders, military, and higher education representatives. All of the individuals have been contacted and have agreed to serve pending final approval by the school board. My hope is that these appointments can be approved expediently to allow sufficient time for notification of meeting dates and times, so that members of the committee can plan their schedules accordingly. The recommendations for the Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee include: Odman Alexander, Director of Office and Family Community Engagement; Megan Ashburn, Parent and Member of the Special Education Community Advisory Committee; Sean Avery, President and CEO of Hampton Roads Workforce Council; Catherine Bailey, a teacher at Kempsville High School; myself; Anna Costellanos, a parent, representative; Danielle Calucci, Chief Academic Officer; Mike Corso, Vice President of Business Banking, Atlantic Union Bank, and Member of the Technical and Career Education General Advisory Council; Kelly Crawford Sorey, Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs at Tidewater Community College; Helen Crompton, Professor of Instructional Technology, and also serves as the Executive Director of the Research Institute for Digital Innovation and Learning, as well as the Director of the Virtual Reality Lab at Oldhaman University; Ray Dayarang, Student at Bayside High School; Matthew Delaney, Chief Schools Officer; Micah DeLoach, Principal of Thoroughgood Elementary School; Clay Dills, CEO of Dill Architects; and Steve Genadey, Captain, Commanding Officer of Naval Station Oceana; Gail Flax, Community Leader with United Jewish Federation of Tidewater; Ty Harris, Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion; Kevin Hill, President of the Virginia Beach Education Foundation; Diana Keswick Hernandez, Parent Representative for the Committee; Michael Krishman, Director of the Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation; Susan Larkin, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, Virginia Wesleyan University; Brandon Lilly, School Improvement Specialist, Bayside Middle School; Sarah Lockett, Director of the Office of Technical and Career Education; Paul Nudigat, Chief of Police for City of Virginia Beach; Melissa Nutter, Regional School Liaison Officer for Little Creek and Fort Story; Ryan O'Meara, Principal at Tallwood High School; Amanda Pine, Co-Chair Interfaith Alliance Board; Elia Pitts, a student from Salem High School; Nancy Porter, Vice President of Marketing and Executive Director at Bayport Foundation; Donald Robertson, Acting Superintendent; Nancy Rogan, Director of Community Engagement of WHRO; Tamika Singleton Johnson, Principal at Larksboro Middle School; Kathleen Slindy, President of the Virginia Beach Education Association; and Debbie Torres, Teacher at Allentown Elementary School. at Allentown Elementary School. Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson, this concludes the recommendations for appointment to the Strategic Plan Ad Hoc Committee. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let me add to that. This was the Strategic Plan Committee that we talked about, Mike Callen representing us, and Stacy Martin. And Stacy was very adamant about continuing this, so I'll talk to her, since there's been other things that have happened since then, okay, guys? So, and are there any questions? Ms. Melnick, sorry.
So what are we looking at for a timeframe for approval of this? Since this, we've known about this before, like, are you looking at the next meeting that you're asking us to approve this? Or do you?
Ideally, the sooner the better, so that people can put it on their calendars and hold those meeting dates. But I also know you have, you know, at a minimum, I want to be able to contact these people and give them dates and times of meetings so that they can, their calendars don't fill up. I would love to get it approved sooner than the next meeting, but I don't know if that's possible.
Madam Chair, is that possible?
It is unless there's anybody that has any questions or concerns against that. Well, Ms. Brown.
It's not about that. I just have some questions.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, then, so, so.
Are you asking me to, if nobody objects, if I can make a motion to add it?
Yeah, nobody objects. Make a, can you make a motion to?
Yeah.
To get it down to action?
Today?
Yeah, that's what she's talking about.
That's what she just.
No, 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 no.
She just said she'd like to have it.
Because the next meeting's like after Thanksgiving, and then we've, you know, you've got your Christmas time, and so, anyway.
So.
Anybody have any objections? Yeah, okay. And we will, but I just want to make sure. Let's do the questions, and then we'll let you do that.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, all right, Ms. Brown.
All right. So there was a lot of various principals and parents and student members, and perhaps I missed it, but was there an application process? How did those members of the community get selected?
Yeah, so we looked at, when I came with the plan in October and shared that we wanted to make a similar list of participants, what we did was looked at who were the participants in the last cycle, which was very similar to the participants who were in the prior cycle as well, like the kinds of positions. So, for example, you saw that Paul Nutigate was on the list, Chief Severa was on the list the time prior. So it's looking for some of our more common partners and relationships that we have, and who would be a good partner for this work as well. And then for the universities, looking at similar universities, but maybe there are slightly different people in positions that we work with since, over the last five years, that we have working relationships with. It would also involve reaching out, so for some of the business partners, I reached out to Sarah Lockett for recommendations, like to work, I work within my colleagues to ask, are there people that we're working with you think would be a good person for this committee to list and to reach out to, who'd be willing to serve too, because it is a time commitment over several months.
Okay, thank you for that. I am particularly interested, though, in the student and parent piece for how those, I mean, there was only a couple students.
Yes, students are the hardest, because it is, it is, it's a roomful of adults. I try to make it as engaging as I can for students. So I reached out to Mary Ann Lafler and asked through her, were there students that she could recommend for, who might be willing to participate and commit to this time, because the spring gets to be a busy time for students, too. So she was able to provide me some names to reach out to. I reached out to the parents of those students to make sure there was permission for those students to participate. For the parent representatives, what I did this time, we didn't have an Office of Family and Community Engagement the last time we did this cycle, but we do this time, so I reached out to Dr. Alexander and asked, in working with his family outreach representatives, were there parents they might recommend for this committee? What's also not quite reflected in this list is, some of those people listed, like business people, are also parents. So there's a, you know, an overlap there, too.
Okay. So, I mean, maybe for future times, I'd like to see us maybe come up with a process so people, we know who's interested, because, you know, there's, like I said, there's parents and students on there, and there may have been other students that would have liked to have been involved, so, you know, and I, there's no motion on the floor for moving it, but I don't really feel like it's an emergency, and we've gotten quite a few things recently. We've moved from information to action, and we do have a process. So I do think that we should probably wait personally, but still a little of the board there. Thank you.
Before I, I don't think there's anybody else who wants to speak, so I don't see your hands, but before I take your motion, let me, Ms. Weems and I were up here conferring that maybe with the situation with Ms. Martin, if I could get someone that would want to be an alternate, so, because if we're gonna, especially if you're making a motion to go ahead and vote tonight, I'd like to have an alternate. Is there anyone? This is, how many meetings do you have?
There are six meetings.
Six, yes.
January through June, one time a month.
Yes. And it's a couple hours.
Yeah, four-thirty to six-thirty.
Yeah, and yeah, yeah.
There's a question down here, Madam Chair.
Question, Ms. Brown.
Is it the same day every week?
There's nearly each time it's a Thursday, there's one week where it's a Wednesday, one time where it's a Wednesday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's morning afternoon.
Four-thirty to six-thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, so, there's a, Ms. Anderson has volunteered, and Ms. Owens was going to, but that is the day of her discipline, so she's, okay. So are we okay with alternate being Ms. Anderson? Everybody okay? Okay. All right, so now, Ms. Melnick, would you, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we move the Strategic Plan Ad Hoc Committee appointments from Information A to fifteen, Action D.
Yeah, you just want to add it. You're not moving it, because it's not on. Yeah, we discussed it. You can just add it.
Okay.
Just say your question.
No, I'll just, I move that we add Strategic Plan Ad Hoc Committee appointments to Action Number Fifteen, Action D.
And you want to include the alternate of Ms.?
Yeah, and let's.
In addition, but in addition, we would be adding Mrs. Anderson as an alternate for Mrs. Martin.
Okay, do I have a second? Ms. Owens. Okay, is there any discussion? See and none? All that are in favor of moving or adding this to Fifteen D in action, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have nine ayes.
All that are against this, please raise your hand.
And we have one nay, the motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. Next is our textbook adoption. Welcome, Ms. Angela Siders, our Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning.
Good evening. Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the Board, and Dr. Robertson. I am here this evening to provide you with information regarding Technical and Career Education's textbook adoption committees, recommendations for the updating textbooks for middle school teen living and high school parenting and early learning careers for implementation in 2024. Before presenting our recommendations, I'd like to thank the Adoption Committee members for dedicating their time and efforts to choose the best textbooks for our students. The image on the screen, thank you. There we go. The image on the screen outlines the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' adoption process for text resources costing less than thirty thousand. Tonight, we are recommending resources for two separate CTE courses. Neither exceeds this threshold. The Adoption Committee is responsible for reviewing textbooks and follows the Virginia Beach Schools' adoption process, which is modeled after the Virginia Department of Education's textbook recruitment process. The first step in the process is to research open educational resources to see if there are any that meet the needs of the course. Calmly known as OERs, these resources must be aligned to the standards, comprehensive enough to serve as a primary resource and of high quality. We also research what other school divisions across the state are using as part of the initial step. If a suitable OER is found, and the committee agrees that this is the best resource for the course, the text is put out for public and teacher review, and then brought before the school board for approval. If a suitable OER is not found, the process of evaluating text and published E resources begins. This was the case for the books we will share with you this evening. These texts will be used in classrooms as resources, and fewer are needed, as each enrolled student will not be assigned a book. Because of the limited scope of tonight's adoptions, the committees proceeded with reviewing textbooks for alignment and quality to narrow the choices to two options for each course to display for public review without the RFP process. The recommendations you will hear tonight come from those two options. On the screen, you will see Recommended First Choice Textbook Selection Teen Living. The committee recommends Exploring Life and Career. The text meets all the state and local competencies and is appropriate for our middle school students. It is written on grade level, includes engaging content, is accessible for our diverse student learners, and can be used for all three levels of teen living. On the screen, you see the Recommended First Choice Textbooks Selected for Parenting and Early Learning Careers. The committee recommends Child Development: Early Stages Through Adolescence. This course currently employs two different texts that were adopted when this content was taught, and two one semester electives. Our recommendation meets the needs of the combined course with just one textbook. The recommended book includes objectives and outlines, outcomes aligned to state and local competencies. It uses an inclusive approach to learning by offering diverse perspectives and backgrounds and supports Virginia Beach City Public Schools' commitment to workplace readiness skills. This slide outlines the cost implications for the initial and total implementation of the first choice textbooks for both courses. It should be noted that we are not seeking the class sets for these courses. The request is for ten textbooks for each school to use as a resource, because most of the learning in the classroom is project-based or hands-on. The total cost involved for the first year of implementation of both adoptions is just under thirty-five thousand, and the total cost for five-year implementation with replacement is projected to be just over forty thousand. Thank you for your consideration of the committee's recommendations. I have with me this evening Kathleen Vuno, Coordinator of Family and Consumer Science. We would be happy to respond to any questions that you may have.
Ms. Franklin?
Hello, Ms. Anderson, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
So I have a question about the Teen Living program, and one of those, not concern, it's not a concern, but I guess what I'd like to understand better is, how much in-depth do we go in regards to teaching them about credit, finances, those type of things? Because I'm just curious if we're even starting to discuss that in those kind of courses?
Yes. And, Ms. Fimbo, if you want to extend, I'll have.
Hi.
So we're starting in sixth grade? Come up to the mic. Good evening, yes, starting in sixth grade, there's a unit on that, and they have it six, seven, and eight. There's obviously more of an emphasis in eighth grade.
Sure.
As they transition to nine.
Okay, because I, not to belabor this point, but I can tell you, I look at credit all the time. And so one of the things I'd really like to ensure is, you know, they might not realize the unintended consequences of bad credit, having to put a deposit down when you get your utility set up, those type of things, and just give them real-life scenarios. So I'd be very much interested, if I could, just to kind of peruse the course and just be able to take a look at that, if you don't mind?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
So I'm glad that the, so basically the kids are going to be able to share these books, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. As we all know, textbooks are very expensive, and we're somewhat moving away from them, but even the online options are very expensive, and as many of you know, I mean, we don't have a, you know, an endless pot of money, if you will, but textbooks are included in the list of unfunded mandates by the state. So these are, these are things that school divisions assume, and it's very expensive, so.
Ms. Manny.
Yes, I would also like to get a copy. How do we get copies of these to review before the next meeting?
We can get them to you.
Okay, wonderful. And the question, you said ten textbooks to share, how many total textbooks is it, for example, the first initial cost of implementation? How much, how many textbooks does that seventeen thousand roughly include? Like, how much per book?
Well, it would be for every middle school.
Okay.
It would be ten textbooks for every middle school.
And we have fifteen.
Fourteen.
Fifteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
One for Bayside.
Hundred and.
One for Bayside.
Hundred, so roughly a hundred and fifty books?
And one for Bayside.
That's eighteen thousand dollars?
Roughly, yes.
My college textbooks don't cost that much. Were there other options that you looked at? I mean, typically, we get multiple options that we, that had been considered.
Yes, I'll have, yes, come on.
I'd actually like to speak to that because. I'm so glad you asked that, because there are so few options now for textbooks, for CTE in general, but especially Family and Consumer Sciences. One of the things I coordinated with my colleagues across the state, they're using this actual textbook, most of them, is that there are just two, and what we found was the readability, the Lexile score, of one of the ones that the textbook company thinks that our children are able to access is really above where some of our students are. And it's just not practical. When we have all of our students, the students that take Teen Living are students, some of them are on a second grade level, and some of them are at thirteen, which is already reading on the collegiate level. So we really have a broad range of students. And one of the things that concerned our teachers the most, and the parent made a comment about this as well, was that there's no way her child would be able to understand if read independent. And so for us, that was a huge concern. One of them was just not acceptable at all. It was, they felt this didn't align with the curriculum. And so because we did have six choices last time I came to you, we are down to two. And that's not us, it's driven by the textbook company.
Right, yeah.
So thank you for asking that.
Yeah, and I understand the electronic copies are sometimes more expensive than the hard copies as well.
Correct.
So, okay, thank you so much for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, and we'll get you that curriculum and the update numbers.
We appreciate. Okay, next is. The next one is the part-time pay rates for Cheryl Woodhouse. There you are.
How are you?
I was looking over there for you, and you're already there. Our Chief Human Resource Officer. Thank you, Cheryl.
Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resource Officer in the Department of Human Resources. As an essential part of our school community, our part-time employees play a crucial role in maintaining the efficiency and success of our educational environment. Today, I stand before you with a proposal for your consideration to increase three of the division's part-time rates. Typically, these proposals are presented during the budget season, however, due to urgent recruitment and retention needs, the administration believes it is critical to consider this matter mid-year concerning three specific areas. The first recommendation for consideration is to increase part-time rates for early literacy support staff, formerly PALS. Staff in this position provide targeted. Staff in this position provide targeted tutoring and intervention to students in kindergarten through third grade who are most at risk for experiencing reading difficulties. Funding for this program is through the Early Intervention Reading Initiative State Grant. Currently, early literacy staff are compensated at the rate of $18.50 per hour for non-certified staff and $21.50 per hour for certified staff. These rates are below the rates paid to other tutoring programs in the school division. While state funding has prohibited our ability to increase these rates in the past, competition for staff to support this initiative when other programs are paying more is challenging as staff select the highest paying tutoring positions. Hence, the proposal is to increase the hourly rates for both non-certified and certified tutors to the rates outlined here, thereby standardizing them with other tutoring rates approved by the school board. The current grant will fund the remaining portion of the 23-24 school year and the 24-25 school year. However, it is important to note that if the grant funds become insufficient to sustain ongoing expenses, it could potentially affect the operating budget in future years or cause us to reduce the tutoring rate for PALS, formerly known as PALS tutors, in the future. The estimated cost to increase the tutoring rates for the remainder of the 23-24 school year is approximately $660,000, inclusive of FICA costs. Ensuring a consistent and high quality of education in our schools during teacher absences is important to the academic progress of our students. Of specific concern is the ability to attract substitutes to work at Title I schools. Due to the growing demand and importance of Title I substitute teachers, we propose increasing the daily teacher rate for all teacher substitute categories, as we did last year, for Title I schools only, by $20 per day. This adjustment aims to attract and retain skilled educators, ultimately benefiting our students. The chart outlines the differences between our current daily teacher substitute rates and the proposed daily rates for teacher substitutes at Title I schools only. The proposed increase will be supported by Title I, for Title I specific positions and all other teaching positions by the operating fund. The estimated cost to increase rates by $20 per day for the remainder of the school year is approximately $87,000. And again, that is based on the percentage of absences occurring at these schools and if we were able to fill all absent positions to 100%. Finally, Virginia Beach City Public Schools Detention Program focuses on not just discipline, but also on the development of social and emotional skills in students. Each school develops a program tailored to its unique student body and disciplined data analysis and uses innovative strategies to decrease repeated behaviors. The current rate of $20 per hour has not been increased since the 2006-2007 school year, making it extremely difficult to staff the detention program. As with any after-school program, the need to have staff to support these programs is a necessity. Therefore, we propose for your consideration increasing the rate from $20 to $25 per hour. Funding for increasing the detention rate will come out of the operating fund. The estimated cost to increase the rate by $5 is less than $10,000 annually, inclusive of FICA. Thank you for your consideration for increasing the part-time pay rates for tutoring, Title I teacher substitutes, and the detention program. This concludes the presentation for tonight, and I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Franklin?
All right, thank you, Ms. Woodhouse.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for you, actually I have a couple. But, so the part-time early literacy support staff, so one of, you know, I mentioned that I had started my tutoring today. Of course, that's a volunteer program. And so, you know, let's just say that members of the community are concerned about, you know, the increase. One, how did we figure out, and how did you determine what inappropriate amount of increase would be? How did you determine that?
Well, when you look at the early literacy support staff tutoring program, because it's grant-funded, the hourly rate was always dependent upon what was available within the grant. All of our other tutoring programs, including our all-in tutoring that was just initiated by the governor, all of those individuals currently make the 27-21 non-certified rate and 33-59 certified. So if approved by the school board, this would put all of our tutoring programs on the same level playing field.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And so if we ever get to the point, I'm just curious, I mean, so we could do, if anybody had an issue, for example, the grant wasn't covering it anymore, if we had an issue, I mean, we would just do a community call and say, there's, would that be helpful to have some volunteer tutors, like what I'm doing right now? Or?
Well, absolutely, absolutely. And we do rely on volunteers. The thing with volunteers, it's as your schedule allows. With the paid tutoring program, those are consistent tutors that we know are coming on those assigned days. So, you know, back in the day, I even volunteered when my kids were attending Creeds Elementary and I worked at the high school. I'd zoom over and, you know, tutor and support students twice a week. But unfortunately, when my schedule changed, then I then had to change my opportunities to volunteer.
So it's basically the difference between somebody who is volunteering and you can't really depend on that, as opposed to having a paid position where it's, okay. And then I did have, I'm actually okay with the part-time detention rate, but I did have a question, kind of outside of this, am I allowed to ask that? But just in the report that we received in terms of the resignations, since you're already here, I did have a question about that because it did seem like we had quite a few... Oh, I'm sorry. No?
I was about to say, that's, that's not on the agenda, so if you... Can you hold that? And maybe send her that question?
Sure, absolutely.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Just email her that question. And then if, email it so all of us can get the answer.
Sure, absolutely.
If you think it's interesting. Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
If we all, no, if we all want to hear it. Which we probably do.
At first I was like, what report? And I was like, oh wait, I think that's closed.
All right, are you finished, Jennifer? Okay, Ms. Franklin. All right, Mr. Calvin?
The spirit of my question was just asked by Mrs. Franklin, so I don't need to repeat it.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Anderson?
How many hours a week do the PALS teachers work?
Up to 29 hours a week.
And we hold them at 29?
We do. Their temporary employment agreement indicates 29 hours a week. If for some reason we have PALS teachers who work over and above 29 hours, then on a lookback, meaning as we calculate pay for any employee, if they go over and beyond that, then we are obligated to offer them benefits. So I will not say it never happens, but I would say we do our due diligence to keep them at 29 hours per week.
Okay. And the reason for that is because it would cost us a lot more money to offer benefits, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And as well as VRS stipulations around retirees being able to only work 80% of a full contract. And for VRS, that lands us about 29 hours.
Okay, all right. I, I was just, I was curious on that. And it did reaffirm what I thought about it would cost a lot more money for us to offer benefits. In some cases where they do go over 29, is because, is it because you need another PALS teacher and that person just felt, goes ahead and steps up and takes more hours? Or?
Well, it, it could be. And typically, we would have the school reach out to the Department of School Leadership as well as work closely with HR. Sometimes it's just not tracking their hours, you know, correctly, or you have a unique situation where someone may have stepped into a situation. If it's seldom, then you can work around that. It's when there's a consistency that that individual is working over 29 hours is when we are then obligated to offer them benefits, full benefits.
I am aware of a couple of schools that are still looking for PALS teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
So just, just to plug in out there, if anybody wants to apply for that, they should just let you know.
Exactly. And any of our other vacancies, you know, I always like to get that plug in there as well.
Absolutely.
Go to VBschools.com, click on the employment tab, or contact Department of Human Resources.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning?
Thank you, Ms. Woodhouse. So regarding the early literacy support staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Those rates are going up a lot and it's adding a lot, 660,000, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
So while I support it right now, because you said we have grant funding for it through '25?
Yes, ma'am, through '24-25.
Okay. With all the pay raises we just gave and the huge increase and chunk that we have to absorb, I'm extremely concerned about being able to sustain this in our operational budget long-term. Is it possible for us to, and perhaps it would be better for us to just approve it through '25 so that if we have staff who's receiving this and then all of a sudden we can't pay them that amount, again, it's not like, hey, what did you just do to me?
Right, yes, ma'am.
They understand that that's a possibility.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. The same way with our substitute rates, we increased those last year with the understanding that at the end of the year, that would end. We were able to, thanks to Budget Department, my best friends, they were able to find additional funding. And even with that, that is for this year only. So yes, ma'am, we could clearly delineate that this is through '24-25 school year or as funding is available.
That's what I would really make, like to make sure that we delineate that.
Yes, ma'am, most definitely.
Ms. Melnick?
So the, the early childhood piece is becoming a very critical part of everything that we do. And I know at the state level, clearly they understand the early childhood piece and its importance. So I'm hoping that funding will increase for the early childhood piece after 2025. My fingers are crossed that that'll be part of the governor's budget. And I can tell you, our PALS teachers now are doing a happy dance right now. And I think about my little Green Run Elementary and Dr. Pedinger that worked there last year and Dr. Pedinger, who is now, I can see sadly making $21.50 an hour. And these are hardworking folks who, who see a lot of children every day. So I'm just really happy that, that, that we got this, so.
And I agree with you. And the hope is always, as we continue to increase our preschool program, that we will be able to continue to give that targeted focus to our even younger than kindergarten students, with hopeful the need of tutors would decrease. But it's nice to know that it's there and available and we can pay people for their additional time.
Do we still have a pull-out program for SOL tutoring? Okay.
Yes.
Many moons ago, I did that, too. That was, that's also very critical and important, so, all right, thank you.
Definitely is, thank you.
Okay, so you have no more questions? Thank you very much. What else? Okay, our next information item is the VSBA legislative proposals. The presenter is me, so you have the proposals in your packet, but we also have it up on So the following proposals were recommended by the committee for submission to the VSBA Board of Directors. Once approved by the Board of Directors, the proposals will be brought before the VSBA Delegate Assembly in November. And I am your Delegate Assembly rep. That's the committee that I am on, so I will be attending that this week in Williamsburg. And we prepared for it on a Zoom meeting last Thursday. So I attended a Zoom meeting with the legislative group and just tell me exactly what we'd be voting on and how it would work, okay? So anyway, in the items below, the underlying language is new language that is proposed to be added to the VSBA Legislative Positions Handbook. Strike-through language is proposed for removal from the VSBA Legislative Position Handbook. The title of each proposed legislative position has been marked to identify whether the proposal is an entirely new position, proposed new position, or is an amendment to an existing position, a proposed amendment, okay? Now, I sent this, I have this sent to you, Ms. Toni Otto sent it to you, so you would have it ahead of time. And just in case your schedules got really, you know, crowded and you didn't have a chance, I'm just going to read through them and give you the rationale and who it was proposed by. There's only four, so bear with me, guys. School facility construction funds and financing, proposed amendment. The VSBA urges the Virginia General Assembly... Excuse me? The, the General Assembly and the US Congress to provide substantial and sustained funding to finance local school construction, renovation, and depth service costs with disbursements to local school boards, including specific incentives for safety, security upgrades to better protect students and staff, as well as incentives for energy-efficient construction and renovation to reduce the lifetime operating cost of school facilities. The reasoning behind this, the concern was raised by our, by our board that we would like to see the VSBA lobbying positions shifted to place priority on the building safety improvements in our schools. We'd like the VSBA's lobbying efforts in this category to be focused on achieving more fund matching and grant opportunities from both the state and federal governments to enable localities to improve safety features when building and renovating schools. Warren County would love to see more tax dollars available to improve the safety measures that would better fortify our buildings. To better protect the people inside from potential dangers, we understand that tax dollars are finite, so we hope to see spending priorities shifted to protect what is truly the most important thing in the school building is the safety of our children and staff. And the rationale is in consideration of recent events, community attention is focused on school building security. The board is asked to consider submitting an additional legislative position change request, which if accepted by the VSBA Legislative Positions Committee, would then move on to the next step to be voted on at the VSBA Delegate Assembly in the fall, which is the one I'm attending this week. If passed by the Delegate Assembly, this would shift the SBA lobbying efforts in the category of school facility construction funds towards seeking states/federal funds to help support local building security upgrades. Any questions? Just for your side information, as I mentioned, Warren County proposed this, the committee discussed it, these proposed amendments to the legislative position and agree that adding this language for school safety, security strength in the position, allowing more latitude for the association's lobbyists to help with getting hopefully construction funds at least towards new schools and our additions, our allocations, you know, that we would help, hopefully, maybe we'll get some funds from the state and from the federal government to help with that. If you put in safety, and safety of the schools, the students, and the staff, maybe that will help out, too, okay? So that's, that was their reason for putting that in. Number two, employee criminal background checks, proposed amendment. The VSBA supports legislation that provides state funding to conduct federal and state criminal background checks for all new employees, and calls for the State Department of Education to establish a state clearinghouse for the results of such criminal background checks, and supports the state... and supports the state fully funding local participation in Virginia's implementation of the Federal Bureau of Investigations, the FBI Next Generation Identification, NGI, Non-Criminal Justice Wrap-Back Service Regarding Reporting and Notification of Public School Employee Misconduct. The rationale is the Commonwealth of Virginia is currently redesigning its state police background check database to interact with the Federal Bureau of Investigations, FBI Next Generation Identification, NGI, Non-Criminal Justice Wrap-Back Service. The current target date for completion of this system is July 1st, 2025. While participation in the service is anticipated to be voluntary, the system would be most useful with maximum participation. Virginia State Police is authorized to charge participating jurisdictions up to a dollar per employee per month, or $12 annually. Those charges can be a significant deterrent to participation and could undermine the usefulness of this reporting system. The position urges the Commonwealth to provide dedicated state funding to maximize local participation so that localities do not have to decide whether to prioritize local funds to participate. And this was proposed by Fairfax County, which, large county, this would certainly help us as well. Ms. Pate, I think it was asked of you. What is, we have to pay for these criminal background checks, right? And how much do we generally pay?
Actually, most of our employee groups pay for those. There are some employee groups that are, were the lower-paid employee groups that are exempt from that. And it was less than $100,000 that is paid out, but that, again, most of our larger employee groups pay theirs. I'm not sure if you want to...
Ms. Woodhouse, you want to add?
Yes, that's correct. Our bus assistants, custodial, food service employees, our employees on the U-10 step scale do not have to pay for their background checks. All other employees do reimburse the division. And of course, if we have any individuals who are having financial constraints or needs, we work with those individuals in terms of covering the cost. And once they're hired and they're working, then they can reimburse the cost. And it's $37 for the background check.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Mr. Culpepper.
So how often are you doing those? You're doing those once? You're just doing them when you hire them, right?
Yes, our employees are, have an extensive background check upon hire. And then after that, if anything occurs, the responsibility is on their part to make us aware. That's like the Oscars. I think they were telling me to stop talking.
You called that in to get interrupted? Okay. Where's the 12, where's the monthly cost coming from? Why is there a monthly cost per employee?
That's the...
I understand. So what are they doing?
It's $12 annually.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what this is. Is this $12 per employee annually, forever and ever? Is that what that charge is?
I'm just, no.
No, our employees are background checked one time upon hire.
I'm not sure if that's the same thing. That's what I'm trying to get to understand.
Well, I think the $12 annual is like new employees you're talking about, ones that they do have to do the, you know, the background check.
What you're saying makes sense, but that's not what it says.
I know, I know. But I think that's what it is. And I can ask that question to Ms., wait a minute, Mr. Culpepper. Ethan, do you have anything?
I'll come back to it.
No, no, if you have something, go ahead. Okay, Ms. ...
I was just going to comment on the monthly thing. I believe that the wrap-back service is that they would notify the district if a charge came up with their employee, which is why it's a monthly fee. So right now, we have it where if an employee gets charged with something in the community, the Board may or may not know and they may continue to come to work until they're in the news or until something else comes up. And that this would have a built-in system so that we're notified when their names come in and that's where that monthly.
Thank you for your expertise on that one. Ms. Anderson.
Part I don't understand, it says up to $1 per employee per month or $12 annually. So in other words, you know, I mean, we have like, you know, 15,000 employees.
Hence, hence, that's why Fairfax is the one that is proposing this. But that question will be, you know, asked, too. We did not, in our preparation for last Thursday for this, was not discussing these, but talking about how the procedure is going to go at the assembly.
Okay.
Okay, so I can, you know, these questions I can bring forward, okay? And I'm sure they will be, but if they're not, I certainly will. Yes, Mr. Culpepper.
Yeah, it brings you back around to where I was getting at with this, which is that cost is outrageous. And the most guaranteed way to distort a market is to force the government to pay for it. So I would not advocate this position, you know, where we, or we, this body, would tell them to tell the state to just pay for this. Like I said, that would encourage an outrageous fee to be paid, which I think is inappropriate. We seem to be doing just fine on $100,000 a year, accomplishing what we need to accomplish. And I do understand what you're getting at, which is that we have to find out essentially if there are reportable things, but it's in employee contracts that they have to tell us. They're in voluntary contracts if they don't.
Okay, Ms. Melnick.
One sentence in there said that it's probably going to be a voluntary participation, but in order for it to really work its magic, it needs maximum participation. But we're government, too, so either we, the government, are going to pay for this or the state is going to pay for this. And that's why Fairfax is asking this to be just added to the lists for VSBA.
Is that, that's a state mandate to have the background checks, right? I mean, we would do it anyway, but I would think it's a state mandate. Is that one of the unfunded state mandates?
I'm not sure it's a state mandate, it's just that you can't hire somebody without a criminal, you can't hire somebody that has certain types of offenses. The only way you know that is to get a background check of some sort.
You have to do a background check, right, okay.
I just want to close the loop on that. What you're saying is actually very much my point. If it's voluntary, then the market will demand the product be affordable and useful. If the state is forced to pay for it for everybody, there is no such demand on the product to be affordable and useful. And so your point is valid, and we would be concerned that everybody use it for the same reasons. We would want to use it, we would want others to use it. But we want the market to bear out a useful product rather than the government just overpay for it.
And then the other argument is, is the state police bringing this forward? It's, you know, the state police and the FBI. It's not like, you know, John Smith, owner of this background check place, although technically it is, but it's the state police and the FBI. So, yeah, it's, I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Culpepper, after the meeting, let's talk about it so I can get that question specifically written. So when I am attending that assembly, I make sure that that's, you know, that's shared, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. This brings us to three, legislative proposal number three. School zone safety standards, proposed new legislative position. The Virginia School Boards Association supports additional local authority and flexibility in setting safety standards in school zones. Pedestrian safety around schools has become an increasingly important issue with an unfortunately growing number of recent tragic accidents. While pedestrian safety is a priority in every jurisdiction, this issue is particularly important where highways are not controlled by the locality and where local input and the specifics of where and how school crossing zones are configured is not as direct. Greater local authority and flexibility over such issues as the determination of appropriate motor vehicle speeds around schools as well as over signage and signals within school crossing zones would assist local school divisions in prioritizing this important safety issue. This, again, was proposed by Fairfax County. And the committee discussed the proposal for the new legislative position, which members felt continued VSBA's longstanding belief that local control is vital for local school divisions. This proposed new position continues the local control stance of the association. Obviously, we don't have a lot of highways that apparently Fairfax County does, but out in the western part of the state, you do have a lot of that. So this is just in support of our other fellow locales in the state. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Callen.
It's just one sentence, but nonetheless, it implies that we're to support additional local authority and flexibility. And you say, oh, that sounds very reasonable. But I stop and say, but I don't have any idea what that really means. What are we meaning when we say additional? Will support additional local authority and flexibility? As an example, what's meant by that? I'm just curious. I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to understand what is intended by the language.
Mr., I mean, Dr. Robertson, would you maybe jump in and see if you can share what you think on that one? And then Ms. Melnick.
The one sentence reads that the Virginia School Board Association supports additional local authority and flexibility in setting safety standards in school zones. And again, it seems as though that's a reasonable statement to make, but at the same time, I don't honestly know what's meant by that.
I think it's probably acknowledgement that the majority of funding for most school divisions are generated by the state, but then the locality has a huge requirement to add funds to develop their budget. And if the state has authority and wants to mandate certain security measures, like we have now, there are certain measures that are noted in our plan out of Richmond that are unfunded. And I think they're just being cautious about trying to create a one-size-fits-all or framework that is more directive to local school boards than would be practical.
But, and you know what, and I will ask that specific thing also question in the assembly, okay? All right, so Ms. Melnick and then Ms. Franklin.
So if you read this sentence right in the middle, it says, "The issue is particularly important where highways are not controlled by the locality." So what they're saying is, hey, this highway that runs by Glenwood Elementary School is not, we don't get to, we don't get to control the speed, nor do we get to control the placement of crosswalks. And so what this is asking is for localities to have more control over controlling the speed and safety around their schools. You know, like in Virginia Beach, we control, we control the speed down Nemo Parkway and Holland Road.
This is going to be the local government, it's not going to be you all doing it. You might have input into this, it'll be whatever the local government is.
Right, also, and it also points out signage, too, especially the flashing lights. And we control our city streets here in Virginia Beach, but not every locality control their local highways. The other entities are determining those speeds and the placement of crosswalks and signage for schools. And so all they're asking the state is, hey, give us a little more autonomy over that decision-making when it comes to safety in our school districts.
And obviously, like I stated, it probably is not going to affect us. We don't have the highways and the, you know, we're not letting our students off or having crosswalks across the interstate. Whereas there are highways out in the western part of the state, and apparently Fairfax County has more of them, too. It's not affecting us as much, okay? But that's basically what it is.
And luckily, no fiscal, no fiscal...
Cost.
Yeah.
Ms. Franklin.
Well, I was just going to add, Mr. Callen, like, for example, the thing that comes to mind for this, it would be Witch Duck Road, where they just created the new placement of the on and off ramp. And that is, I mean, although it's not right at a neighborhood, it could be very close to a neighborhood where there are bus stops and schools and different things. So that's kind of something that just kind of, I was thinking as we were reading through this, that was my first initial, just because I live close there, you know, where it could have been impactful to us possibly in, as a division, where they started making those changes to Witch Duck, the on and off ramp, so.
Okay, final one. Judicial enforcement of truancy proposed new legislative position. The VSBA strongly encourages judicial proceedings to follow a standard timeline with automatic actions taken at each step of the truancy timeline. The courts have established outcomes prescribed by the Code of Virginia and Virginia legal statutes that allow for specific actions in relation to truancy matters for both the student and the parent/guardian. The request is that a firm, fair, and timely implementation of those outcomes be standardized and practiced in each courtroom in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Rationale, there is no doubt that chronic absenteeism and truancy are major issues facing all school divisions across the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States. In fact, absenteeism is an issue facing all businesses and industries in a post-pandemic world. Tazewell County is very much in favor of complying with the Code of Virginia 2.2.1-254 for the compulsory school attendance of any child who will have reached the fifth birthday on or before September 30th of any school year and who has not passed the 18th birthday. However, to hold schools accountable through accreditation for issues outside of school control is unfair and punishes schools for decisions that rest outside school control. The VSBA, which should voice concern through lobby and publication of the need for the judicial branch to enforce the regulations and law pertaining to, A, parents who do not take steps to curb absenteeism, and B, students who defy parental actions and school policies by continued absence from school. And there are codes beside each one, I'm not going to read the codes for each one of those. Schools undergo a rigorous and time-consuming process to enforce local attendance policy that has been adopted through the language of the Code of Virginia. Only after numerous notifications to the student/parent/guardian regarding absenteeism and formal attendance conferences with student, parent, guardian, and the creation of an attendance plan with task for student, parent, guardian, and school officials have proved unsuccessful in curbing attendance issues, may the school institute child in need of supervision. Proceedings with the Juvenile and Domestic Relation District Court pursuant to 116.1-228 of the Code of Virginia. The school may also institute proceedings against the parent pursuant to 18.2-371 or 22.1-262 of the Code of Virginia. Even after all of the time and energy expended in the creation of the plans, the meetings with all parents, and the careful documentation of absences, plans, meetings, and goals, it is out of the school's power and authority to take additional actions to enforce attendance. While there are correctable actions that can be administered to the parent/student/guardians, it is at the discretion of the sitting judge. While the school system does not seek to advise a judge how to operate or administer the law, it is desired that a timeline or schedule of actions be implemented and followed. There are too many examples of the same child appearing before the same court upwards of seven times with no action taken other than verbal reprimands and continuation of meetings and tasks. The true authority to enforce school attendance policy resides in the judicial realm, and there are a plethora of options available to judges for compliance. The need is that the options be instituted in a timely and meaningful manner. Ms. Lynetti.
I do want to, I would tread lightly in this area. This is a really complicated area. You're going to get some on truancy. There's a whole lot of steps you take, and your social workers and school staff are working incredibly hard, sometimes for weeks or months. Then it goes to the courts, and the courts also end up taking weeks or months. So that part is true, but partially because... So that part is true, but partially because of the way their dockets run and the timing and scheduling. I will tell you, these statutes are very complicated. They're hard to read, and it's not untrue that a student comes back multiple times, but there's reasons for that because sometimes they get in court, appointed counsel, they didn't get service. And then the courts really are very limited in some of the options. So I think what it really should say is more about, more of a collaboration about how the judiciary can be authorized to move quicker than it can, because you're right. By the time we get there, we start at the beginning of the year, we get up to April or May when we've completed our steps, we go to court, the court can't get on the docket for two or three months. We're coming in for June to enforce a child going to school last year. And I don't disagree with the fact that that gets held against you. You lose a couple of months in that time here because you don't have a way to enforce it. I just don't want to slam the judiciary, because the way the statutes are written don't really help the courts either, and they're stuck in their own processes. We've worked very, very hard with the local court system to expedite a docket. They have given us extra days on the docket the last couple of years. They're working really hard with us, but they're limited too. So I'm not against the concept, I think, but I think it should be more talk about or study collaboration and how we can make this work for everybody, because we are all trapped in the same situation. Nobody wants the kids out of school, but everybody's trapped by other rules. So I would just tread lightly in this area, because I don't want to slam the courts. There may be incidents with other courts, but I will tell you, our courts are working hard to try to work with us.
Okay. So when we are discussing this, would it be advantageous for me to bring up that point? That maybe we need to work more in collaboration with the courts to act quicker? If they could, you know, try to act quicker?
I think it probably needs to be sort of a study with VDOE and the court system. The statutes don't mesh up well with what happens. You know, there's, there's our process and their process, and it doesn't really work very, sorry, it doesn't work well from there. So I don't want to slam the courts in that sense, because the courts are just going to say, we're not interested in helping you out, and we need their help, because our problem is we can't reach across a property line, grab a kid out of the house, and bring him in here. That, that's what we need a court or a police officer to do. So we don't want to lose that ability to do that, but we all agree the expediting season. And I will tell you, the courts are telling us, they're frustrated. Why is it April and we're seeing this kid for the first time? Because we have steps that we have to go through. So I think it's also, it's, it's the courts, but they also need to look at our role. They've hamstrung us that your, the schools have so many steps they have to go through that you're talking months before we get a kid into court, and then the courts also have steps. So I think the whole process needs to be looked at. In those cases where judges are not enforcing it might be the situation, but maybe there needs to be more of a collaboration or a study.
Okay. And that would come under VDOE?
It's probably got to be both VDOE and the judiciary system.
Okay. All right, Ms. Melnick.
So I think this case in particular kind of shows that we're ahead of the curve. And Virginia Beach has kind of started the ball rolling in collaboration with our judges here locally. We've talked about that here on the dais and then our legislative committee. But I think, I think what's getting lost in translation in, in this particular proposal is the, is, this is the operative part here. However, to hold schools accountable through accreditation, that's the issue for these school divisions, is that the truancy piece, we're being held accountable through accreditation. And that's the part that is starting to frustrate school divisions and school boards. And I can tell you that we did discuss this in particular in our last legislative meeting. And Kemper Consulting is looking to address this issue and to have somebody potentially carry a bill from somewhere else in the state, that we would not probably find somebody local to do this. But the school divisions are getting slammed through accreditation, and that's, that's the unfair piece to this. And I think this is why Tazewell brought this up.
Yeah, this is where this is coming from. But I want us to discuss it before all of these, before I go in there and represent Virginia Beach School Board with our, our vet.
Right. And, and, and they put in there, and they're, that the committee agreed that more needs to be done to assist local divisions when dealing with truancy matters in their communities. And so per your point, it's, it's probably a study that needs to, needs to occur to direct, to direct this for the Commonwealth.
Yeah, and I think VDOE's own regulations trap you. So they're hitting you for accreditation rules over here, and some of that's federal accreditation. And then some of it, their truancy rules, and they don't look to see how they work together. And then they're not accounting for the court piece, and the courts have other rules that they have to follow. So the whole thing needs to be studied to help you out. It is a problem. It needs to be addressed, and it needs to be parental involvement. Because again, your problem is none of us alone can reach in and grab that kid and get that kid here. So what, how do we expedite that process? And that, that needs to be VDOE jumping in to look at.
And we did talk about that parental piece too. And that's where, you know, that parent parental, that, that parental responsibility is slipping. But it honestly, to this group, it might get picked up. There might be someone who, who sponsors a bill for this exact problem. But, and again, mostly because schools are being held on.
Okay, Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Yeah, I know that we're on a tight schedule, because our chair is having to go Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday, yeah.
Thursday.
The vote's actually Thursday. And I'm not really sure what, even if our chair brings up our concerns, I'm not really sure if they're going to change them there on the floor enough for me to be comfortable with then voting on it. So I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with two of these, but I'm not comfortable with sending Chair Riggs to vote for two of them. So I'm fine with, with one and three, but I, I have concerns with number two and number four. And just the fact that we can't, we're not privy to the conversation that she will have on Thursday. I mean, some of us will be there, but still, I am reserved on those two.
Okay, so I'm going to let Ms. Anderson speak, but then, you know, I'll come back with what I suggest on the floor, okay?
These won't be presented in lump sum. These will be presented one at a time, and she'll be able to vote and tell her reasons that we have given her when she votes on Thursday.
Right, we have to let her know tonight how we want to do that.
I understand that, but I'm saying, I wrote down that, that it's been suggested, like for number four, that we recommend a study on this, on this whole thing. That's what I wrote in my notes. I don't know if that's the way the rest of the board feels, but I agree with Ms. Lynetti on a, a whole study on this whole thing, because the way it's written through VDOE ties us to follow guidelines that we have to follow before we even approach taking a student to court or a parent of a student to court to get them, you know. So my thing is, is that I'll probably vote no on number four, but that's just the way I'm planning to vote and, tonight. And, you know, so we can, we can let her know what she's going to say and what we, how we feel about this. That's what the whole thing is about Thursday. But she'll be able to vote one at a time. She, it won't be en masse.
Ms. Manning.
Okay, so I'm just talking about this process in general. I kind of agree with Ms. Weems regarding the, the, the specific proposals that are in front of us. But I thoroughly went through the handbook. And on page two of the handbook, it says, "Each school board member is emailed an electronic copy of the Delegate Assembly Handbook 45 days in advance of the VSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting in the fall. Delegates and alternates are requested to discuss the information in the handbook with their local school boards prior to the delegate assembly. Thus, all members of the association have time to meet and discuss legislative positions before coming." I didn't get this 45 days in advance.
Everybody got it.
I did not get it.
You might have.
I, I did not get it. And I didn't get it until I requested it from Ms. Riggs a week and a half ago. That's when I got it. I did not get it from the VSBA. And I don't know why everybody is shaking their hand head no, because I didn't get it. I, I don't know why people are arguing with me. And the Legislative Position Handbook, specifically in our agenda packet on the cover page, it says that we should pay special attentions to Sections nine and 10. And so I paid extra special attention to those. And there's more than four legislative proposals. There were 10 that were submitted to the Legislative Committee. Only four were recommended by the Legislative Committee. But what the handbook says is it says that those school divisions that propose those can propose them at the delegate assembly, and with two-thirds majority, they can have it heard and voted on. And for example, Loudoun County had one that I actually thought was pretty good, and it addressed some of the attendance issues and waivers and accreditation. And the Legislative Committee rejected that one. And so that one could come up, and Ms. Riggs may be required to vote on that. Yet we've not had a discussion about it. And there's others in here like that as well. And so I, I'm, I'm very frustrated about that. Also, on page 68 of the handbook, it says, "Any board that wishes to adopt a legislative position differing from the actions taken by the VSBA Delegate Assembly needs only to meet after the VSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting and adopt the local position. Absent that action and notification to the VSBA, school boards that participate in the assembly, even if they were on the losing side, will be presented to support the position." So, and it further goes on to further state, any position that's already been adopted by the VSBA, it's assumed that we agree with it, unless we have met and taken action that states otherwise. So all of the legislative positions that's in this handbook, the VSBA is going to be lobbying in Richmond, saying that the Virginia Beach School Board supports all of it, even though most of the members that are sitting up here have probably never even seen it. So I, I'm very uncomfortable with that, and I feel like this board needs to take action on those items as well. There's one other thing that I had. Just, you know, I wrote down, I took a bunch of notes going through the packet, and there were some mistakes. It still lists, it lists Ms. Weems as the alternate, not Ms. Anderson. I'm not sure why that is. You're not the alternate?
There was, it's a long story, but basically I'm not because of the way it was sent into the SBA.
But we voted.
We did lay our committee.
So Ms. Weems, do you know that you're the alternate?
Ms., hold on, Ms. Tonyato.
What happened was, because we were voting on the committee assignments, and that took over, I think, two or three meetings, the deadline was missed by the time they printed the handbook. But they are aware up at the VSBA, because I did notify them, that Ms. Anderson is the alternate, even though Ms. Weems is listed in the program, because they printed it prior to me giving them the information since we, as a board, had not voted on the committee assignments.
Okay. Okay, so I'm still confused as to who's the alternate, but I guess y'all will figure that out. So, and it also says, "The Legislative Position Handbook includes all legislative position statements of the VSBA that have been approved by the Delegate Assembly at the annual convention. Each spring, the Legislative Positions Committee contacts all school boards in Virginia and asks for its recommendations on new legislative positions that should be considered." We did not have any discussions this year about what legislative positions that we wanted to have considered by our school board. And so I just, I just really feel like, at least I have been out of the loop on this. Maybe everybody else hasn't, but I haven't been receiving the information. I wasn't given an opportunity, because I can't make a decision individually. We have to make it as a board on these legislative positions that are in our handbook. So I don't know where the ball got dropped, but I didn't get the information.
Ms. Melnick.
Okay, so I'm going to address a few of those. First of all, every spring, we are given an opportunity, not as a full board, but the Legislative Committee. So Legislative Committee in the spring should have discussed any proposals that they would like to bring forward. And the truth is, there may not be a, a, a proposal. We, I was not on Legislative Committee in the spring. I was just put back on recently, but here's the deal. We don't always have something we want to bring forward. I remember one time Mrs. Lynetti said, gosh, you know, there's some stuff surrounding special education advocates, and we kind of threw that around, but couldn't quite come up with the language to bring something forward. But each legis, each year, the Legislative Committee has given that opportunity. And sometimes you get the response, like, thank you very much for your, for your input. This is not one that we picked up this year. I, I explained it to the board in my email. It's kind of like a contest. And getting your, your proposal picked up by the VSBA is kind of like a prize. And we, in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, have had it happen twice maybe in the past, since I've been on the board. We've had ours picked up twice. The truth is, I don't know that everybody reads all of the VSBA stuff that comes to them. If you're not interested in VSBA, you probably, not, I'm not accusing anybody, but if you're really not interested, you probably just skip it or delete it or whatever. None of this has changed since I've been on the board. It's the same procedure for the past nine years. And honestly, we have members of this board that vote against the VSBA legislative agenda every year. And so it's not a big deal. If you are not happy with this VSBA legislation, vote no. Their handbook has not changed, so I don't understand, you know, the reading of VSBA's handbook that has not changed since I've been on the board. It's been the same procedure every time. And if we go back and look, I think we can honestly say that there are members of the board who vote against their legislative priorities every year. So in, you know, for the sake of time, it's 8:08. I, I just ask that if you are not comfortable, that we can vote on each of these individually, and we can move forward with these. But in the future, I ask this board at this time of the year, next year, to please read the legislative priorities that come. That is your responsibility. It is an organization that this board is a member of, and with that comes responsibilities for reading. I'm on the Legislative Committee right now, so I will make sure that that is brought forward next year for the board. I don't know what happened the last couple of years, but when I was on the board, we did, when I was on that committee, we did bring forward all of that material for the board. So I'll make sure, my responsibility for next year is to make sure you guys have it all.
Ms. Brown.
So I was just double checking my emails, because I do read the VSBA emails. And I don't know that I, I'm not sure I got the handbook until it was uploaded to SharePoint. But I did read all 170 pages of the handbook before this meeting. And over 70 pages of this are positions that apparently are maintained if they're not supported, which was really surprising to me, if you don't revoke your support for it. That was a really surprising thing to see in here. You know, this is all very new to me, but I was a little shocked, and I was even more shocked that there's language that says, "If I'm in disagreement with the majority opinion of the VSBA, I should support the VSBA's position and represent accordingly in public and in private." I, I was a little alarmed by that language here. It's been in here since 97, so I did try to find historical handbooks. And then I started to realize that the Delegate Assembly Handbook contained predominantly the agenda, and so I read through the minutes. And I guess I just have a question really. There was 10 proposals this year. Will the Delegate Assembly only vote on those four proposals, or will they vote on all 10?
They will vote. Oh, I'm sorry. They will vote on the four? The 10 proposals that if they didn't pass, then they won't be voted on? Okay, unless, unless they're, now, anybody can bring something to the floor. But as Ms. Manning said, it has to be a two-thirds vote to, to pass and go through. So if you're going to, if, for instance, if we had something that we really wanted, or one of those other districts that really wanted it, and it wasn't. or one of those other districts that really wanted it, and it wasn't passed, one of those ten, they can bring it back. But if they haven't done their due diligence and worked across the state to get enough people to vote for it, it's going to fail. I mean, and that, and that's just basically how these assemblies work.
And everybody just has one vote?
Yeah. And every, yeah, everybody has one vote. You've got your representative that has the one vote from each school system.
Okay, well, so, I mean, and I don't know if this is something you want to fiddle with. They do have that sample for proposing an amendment. It would require that vote, but perhaps we could change the language to make it so that it's amenable for the division, if you wanted, on that one, and then just vote no. But I'm okay with voting no. There's two that I support, but I, I am going to say I'm very alarmed by what I've seen here, and quite frankly, there's positions in here that are definitively contradictory to what I was elected to do. So, I think we need to have further conversations about what is in here and where the division stands on each one of these positions, or we could tell the V S B A that we're not going to be included as supporting those positions unless they were up for a vote, because this body has changed over the course of time that these have been adopted. Thank you.
And what we could do, if you would like, is I can get with Ms. Lynetti with the, is that the proposal for four, you were talking about, the attendance one?
Um, yes, yes.
And so, we could, you know, if you guys want me to do that, um, we can make that proposal to, I mean, that.
And I mean, that may just.
Motion tonight.
At this point, I think it may just muddy the waters. We may just have to vote on it and decide. It was just a thought, maybe that'd be for future years. Anyway, that's all my questions. I was just curious about the other six proposals.
They were voted, there's, there's a committee of eight, I'm not on that, okay? And that committee of eight votes on the proposals that are brought forth, and then they're shared with all of the rest of the members of the V S B A, which is all of us. Okay? Ms. Manning? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams and then Ms. Manning.
Yeah. Okay, I was Legislative Chair, I think, for seven years here. And so, I propose, I, I just want to make a suggestion of whoever's on this committee, and I know Ms. Melnick is, and I don't know who else is, but that every spring, this is how we used to do it, we bring, the Legislative Committee brings to the whole board, these are things we're thinking of to bring to the V S B A Legislative Committee, what do y'all think? And then we write it, and then we talk about it, and we discuss it, and then we submit it to the Legislative Board of eight people, and then they vote on it. That's how these four got here. But it wasn't just a legis, I don't think it's just a Legislative Committee, it's the whole board needs to agree on that. So, I would make a suggestion, whoever's on that committee, every spring, bring something to the board of, "We don't have anything," or "This is what we're thinking about," but "Board members, do you have any suggestions?" Because some of these will come, you know, from board members. And then get that in, and the V S B A Legislative Committee will vote for it. And I also suggest, every fall, the Legislative Committee remind us that the packets come in and actually have maybe a workshop and actually discuss all this stuff before it's voted on. But for now, we don't have enough time. We're just going to have to vote on these today and send our chair off with our vote, I think.
Ms. Manning.
So, what if one of these proposals that were not recommended comes to the floor for a vote, and it gets the two-thirds that it needs to come to the floor for a vote? Then we've not given you direction to be able to vote on it, so what will you do?
If you haven't given me direction to vote for it, I'm not going to, I'm going to vote against it. If we vote against, whatever we vote against tonight as a whole, whatever.
What, no, I'm talking about the proposals that we've not talked about.
Oh.
The six that were there that the.
If they're brought before, I mean, I cannot vote for any of them.
Right, I mean, I think the right thing would be to abstain.
We can make a decision on that tonight. So, if you all read them, if you all read them, which you should have, you should give me your input tonight.
Well, it's a lot of them. We could be here for a while. I mean, I read them and took notes, and I know how I feel about them, but I don't know that everybody else has done that, because it was not in our agenda packet. It was in the handbook. So, and.
But I did send an email out and ask everybody to read through them, and the agenda was, the booklet was sent out, and I asked.
So, and I would like to request that an item be put on the agenda before session begins, for us to discuss all of the legislative positions and what position that we, as a Virginia Beach School Board, feel comfortable with having our name behind. Because like Ms. Brown said, there's a lot in it that she, you know, maybe some things that she doesn't support. I know there are some things in there that I don't support, and I think that it's only appropriate that our board takes a position, especially with all of our new board members. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
Can we just go with that, then? So, we're going to vote on the four, the four that we discussed tonight in depth, and anything else beyond that? If it makes it to the floor, it receives the two-thirds needed that you abstained from the vote? Okay?
I can do that.
Okay.
Are we all agreement with that?
I'm in agreement with that.
I'm in agreement with that. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to start with, we'll start with proposal number one. That's the school facility construction funds.
We're not at action yet.
Oh, that's right. But yeah, I'm sorry, this is just information. Thank you. All right, let's move on to our next, let me get back to my, where I am. Our consent agenda. School Board Chair, is not going to announce, the Policy Review Committee, P R C Recommendations for Ms. Lynetti. These were all the consent that went, we went through the last meeting, and I'll just, I'll name them, Ms. Lynetti, you don't have to. Policy four six dash sixty-two, evaluation license personnel. Policy five dash six, student parent guardian appeals. Policy five eleven, age of compulsory attendance exemptions. Policy five twelve, legal withdrawal. Policy five thirteen, home instruction. Policy five seventeen, absences, truancy, parental notification. Policy five twenty-one, student suspensions and expulsions. Policy five thirty-six, conduct involving punitive action. Policy seven three, access to records. B, recommendation, recommendation of a general contractor. This was the Diamond Springs Elementary School chiller boiler replacement. And two, First Colonial High School rooftop unit R T U replacements. And then C, Canvas, year one implementation evaluation. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda items as presented?
Chair, Riggs?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to point out, for consent item number fourteen B one, there was a typographical error. The title was correct, but under the recommendation, it had Rosemont Forest. And I did, everyone should have a copy of the updated cover sheet. It was also posted online, and it was also updated to your SharePoint site, and I did send the board an email regarding that. So, I just want to make sure you guys knew that it was for Diamond Springs Elementary.
And not Rosemont. Okay. Um, so, I need, are there any objections to the school board consent agenda? Okay? If so, please identify any of them. All right? Then, here and none, I'm going to call for item, I'm going to call for a motion to accept the consent agenda. Ms. Franklin, and seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Okay? All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. All right, now we're on action. The Personnel Report Administrative Appointments. A call for a motion to approve the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Moved by Ms. Brown and seconded by Ms. Owens. Is there any discussion? Okay, I call for a vote to approve the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay, Dr. Robertson. Are there any administrative appointments?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I am pleased that tonight you have accepted our recommendation of Bradley Ward, currently an Admin Assistant at Larkspur Middle School, and previously a teacher, longtime teacher in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, to be the next Assistant Principal at Corporate Landon Middle School.
Yeah, he's one of our teachers here.
Yes. And I'm also pleased that you've accepted our recommendation of Shannon Mackey, currently a preschool coach in the Department of Early Learning in Norfolk Public Schools, to be the new Coordinator in Special Education and the Office of Programs for Exceptional Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Okay, so now we are on B, the Policy Review Committee, P R C Recommendations, Bylaw one dash fourteen, Compensation and Expenses. Call, okay, Mrs.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Camilla Lynetti, on behalf of the P R C. I'm bringing forward the Bylaw one fourteen carryover. You saw the consent items in the last P R C matter. Because this is bylaw, it does have to be acted on by the board. It cannot be a consent vote, so that is why it comes on in action. This was the compensation expenses. This is what you discussed at the last meeting. We have updated it with the recommendation that you had. So, under Compensation Expenses, under Section A, Compensation, the recommended sentence is the last sentence, which would be effective January first, twenty twenty-five. The annual salary for school board members will be twenty thousand, and the annual salary for the school board will be twenty, school board chair will be twenty-two thousand. And in Section B, to correspond with that, we would be adding in the third paragraph a sentence that would read, "Effective January first, twenty twenty-five, the school board members will no longer receive the communication allowance and the data allowance, which are part of the expenses on there." So, when you receive the updated salary, you would reduce the allowances that you have on balance sheet. And then the recommendation, the reminder that is to pull out the editor's note. So, those are the current recommendations coming out of P R C incorporating what the school board had indicated at the last meeting.
Okay, are there any questions on that presentation? Okay, see and none? A call for a motion to approve Bylaw one dash fourteen, Compensation and Expenses. Ms. Owens, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Melnick. Okay? Any discussion now? Okay, I call for a vote to approve Bylaw one.
No, it does.
Oh, Ms. Franklin, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I thought you said okay.
No, I'm sorry. Well, I just wanted to explain. I, I expressed my discomfort about giving, voting on my own salary increase, and so I did take it to my district and ask them their opinion. And I have to say that I had the majority say that they did not approve an increase, so that is, and I even asked when I was working the election polls, and, and I did not get a, an affirmative majority vote that, that they felt comfortable with that at this time. So, I just want to explain why I could not vote for this, to approve it, and just kind of explain how my district felt. Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
So, you know, I think I've said this before, I, I'm not opposed to an increase, but I, I have some heartburn about an increase this large all at once. I would not be opposed to a smaller increase with maybe some cost of living adjustments written into the policy, but I cannot support it as it's written. Thank you.
Ms. Owens.
I know that we've discussed this matter last meeting, and I've spoken with some of you guys in person. I just want to thank those who have been open to hearing from their constituents and others in considering opening the door a little wider for people to participate and have their voices heard in a different, in a different level. This position does take a lot of time away from family and jobs and, you know, other expenses that go with that. And the fact that our salary hasn't been looked at in over a decade makes it so that it almost gives an appearance of a pay-to-play situation to be able to participate on the board. If the board is not going to increase cost of living and go with inflation for the general public to where it would be unrealistic and unreasonable to expect that same thing from the public in any position that they would be working in, it creates a situation where to be a board member, you have to be willing to not accept, or to vote against, or not have what we would want for every staff member and every other person in the public. And it certainly eliminates certain people from being able to have their voices heard from this side of the podium. And so, for those who are going to vote, yes, I, I appreciate that vote to open the door and have other voices that historically haven't been sitting up here on this dais. And for those who choose to vote no, that is obviously their prerogatives, but I would hope that our members who are going to vote no, if they are on the board with us when these pay raises start, that they will find a way to donate the raises that they didn't feel we were entitled to, to the district where they belong. So, I thank you for your, for your openness in it. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
So, technically, I look at, I look at the raise this way. We're not jumping from twelve thousand to twenty thousand. We've had a few little incremental additions, and so we're already at fourteen-four, and so we're looking at, you know, just fifty-six hundred dollars. So, I think that that is fair, and of course, you divide that by, by twelve. It's, it is still a, a job that requires a lot of attention. I don't think the public has a true understanding, and they know what we do here every other Tuesday, but the committee work is vast. We are, we, we do a lot of work, and while I typically would not vote for a raise for myself, I think in this case, I look at my colleagues, and I, and I look at the work that is done and the time that is put in, and I think it's kind of long overdue for a division of this size. So, I would, I will support this for my colleagues and for anybody in the future who is a member of the school board.
Ms. Anderson.
For the reason that Ms. Owens talked about, the fact that this will open it up to people who may not run, want to run for this position, is another reason that I will support it. This is the time of year, right now, when we are asking people to be thinking about running for this office for the election next November. So, but we're, we're approaching people now, and there are people out there, believe it or not, there are people on this board who had no idea, when they were asked to run for this office, what the job entailed. Think about it. Did you know, or did you, did you take, did you run for this office thinking that you were only going to have to meet twice a month? That was it? That is not what we do. Even reading the emails every day takes a good hour of reading, sometimes responding, and I thank God every day that I don't have to respond to every single email as I did when I was the chair. We can respond if we choose to, but we depend. We can respond if we choose to, but we depend on our chair to respond. But just reading those emails, and there are people out there who think we don't read them. I can assure you that every one of us read these emails every day. And sometimes I choose to respond as well. I attend as many events as I can physically get to, to represent this board, to show support for our staff and support for our students. That takes time and effort as well. And I don't do it for the glory. I do it because I truly support our staff and students. You know, committee work does take time, and you have to prepare for committee work as well. So, you know, like I said, many people do not know, they don't have a clue how much time this job takes. And I don't, I don't fault it. I just do it. I'm lucky because I have the time, because I'm a retired educator, because I taught school for thirty-six years, and now I can do that. I have the time. But a lot of people don't have the time. They don't have the luxury. They don't maybe have a spouse who can, who can supplement their income when they have to leave their children at home. So this, twelve thousand dollars is what it started out being whenever I started being on this board. And I, I don't think that twenty thousand is too much to ask. The assistants that the city council people have are making twenty thousand a year. And that just started recently. Right. So, you know, I do believe that as an elected official for this school board, making the decisions we make and doing the jobs that we do for this school board, that twenty thousand dollars is not too much to ask, especially when you have city council assistants making that much as well. So I, I think it's, that's only fair. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
Okay, and so for my math friends, we're, we're going to go from twelve hundred dollars a month to sixteen hundred dollars a month before taxes. So after taxes, it's, you know, a lot less. So the jump is not that big.
Okay.
I forgot one thing. It doesn't start, it doesn't start next week.
This starts in January twenty-five.
Yeah, this will not start until after the next election of candidates for the school board, which.
Yep, that's how this gentleman wrote it.
A whole another year away.
You vote, but the people knowing that you voted have an opportunity to replace you with another group who can turn it around in twenty twenty-five. They don't like it.
Yep, they can. So we can vote for it, it can be voted back down, out. Okay. So we have a motion. We've discussed it. Now, all that are in favor of passing Bylaw one fourteen, Compensation and Expenses, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have seven ayes. Eight. Raise your hand. Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
All that are against it, please raise your hand.
And we have two nays, the motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. Now for the V S B A legislative proposals, okay? We're just going to call for a motion, I guess, for each one, okay? That's the way to do it. So we'll start with, I call for a motion to approve the Virginia School Board Association, V S B A Legislative Proposal Number One, that was presented tonight by me. Do I have a? Moved by Mrs. Anderson, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Melnick. Okay, this one is the School Facility Construction Funds and Financing, okay? All right. So, um, is there any discussion, any more discussion on proposal number one? All that are in favor of proposal number one, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, the motion did pass.
Okay, for proposal number two, Employee Criminal Background Checks, okay? All the, do I have a motion for proposal number two? Moved by Ms. Melnick, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Anderson. Okay, discussion. See and none. All that are in favor of proposal number two, please raise your hand.
We have two ayes.
All that are against, please raise your hand.
And we have eight nays, so that motion did fail. That motion did not pass.
Okay, propose, Legislative Proposal Number Three, School Zone Safety Standards, okay? Moved by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Manning. Any discussion? Yes.
Just real quick, Ms. Callan made a good point earlier, that, that language is pretty vague. I don't think I object to what they're getting after, but I'd appreciate it if you asked for some clarification when you discuss it.
Okay. What, what kind of clarification are you asking specifically?
Well, it doesn't say here at all what they intend to do.
Yeah, in the rationale.
Okay, well, sure, the rationale supporting documentation. I mean, what, what are they going to ask the legislature to change? Is that in the rationale, you think?
Local control.
I understand that. No, and I don't object to that. And, Ms. Melnick, you made a, you made a good discussion about what that means in application or what we think it means in application. I just don't think very much of it is stated here. So I think of it. I just, I feel like you need to get some clarification from them when it's discussed, what they think this means in application.
I mean, in the language itself.
In the language itself, correct?
Right, I get it.
I agree with that assessment.
May I? While I don't mind you asking, it does state in here, "The committee discussed the proposal for the new legislative position, which members felt continued V S B A's longstanding belief that local control is vital for local school divisions." And it's just about where people don't have local control on their, on those highways, that some consideration is given for localities to be a part of that process for signage. And, and, you know, and localities know best, right? So that's the way I view it.
I can agree with that. Your points are, your points are spot on.
Okay, so is it clarified then?
I don't think it's clarified in their language. What Ms. Melnick is saying is what I think it means. I think it's what we all think it means. It's not what their language says.
And I can ask them.
So, I mean, like, how are you going to write, how are, how are you going to encourage the state to write in legislation that the, that the city or the county should have more control over roads or signage and what have you? I don't know how this translates to legislation, and that's where the rubber meets the road.
Okay. All right. So all that are in favor of Legislative Proposal Number Three, please raise your hand.
We have nine ayes.
All that are against, please raise your hand.
And we have one nay, the motion did pass.
Okay, Proposal Number Four, Judicial Enforcement of Truancy, okay? Do I have a motion to Mr. Callan? And do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Williams. Discussion. Mrs. Melnick.
Again, just the board's position. I, I, I hope that you will just abstain and that you will explain your reasoning why that this board felt that perhaps a study would be more, would be more sufficient at this point.
Say, a more comprehensive review of everything involved in truancy.
Yeah, and I have that written down.
Although, as I stated, this is, this probably will go somewhere. This probably will pass, and it, and, and somebody's going to write, somebody will champion this bill, honestly.
From what I understand, somebody will.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're hearing.
Yeah, that's what. I've just, by the way, guys, I have discussed this, these, all these proposals with Joel Anders. So I have talked to him about all of these, so. And with Ms. Lynetti. Okay, Ms. Manning.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I, I am going to request that you vote no on this, but also maybe provide the opportunity for them, for us, to maybe help them work on some better language, especially Ms. Lynetti has done so much of this work already for our division. So perhaps she could help. I know some of our staff has as well, Mr. Jamison, Dr. Saltner, Mr. Delaney. So I think with our staff, perhaps we could help them come up with some better language.
Your, your staff has phenomenal understanding of truancy and how hard they're working. They're a very good example, and they could speak to, I think they would be experts for you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my suggestion, though, Madam Chair, would, if, if that happens, that Ms. Lynetti work with our lobbyist to find somebody who's going to carry this, that will carry this bill, that, that you maybe be a part of that. Because I really think that this is an issue across the Commonwealth.
I just, what I don't want to see you do is irritate the judiciary, since we're working really hard with our judiciary. I can understand why some may have a problem and they need to deal with that, but I don't want it to look like we're not, because our, our local judiciary is working very hard with us, so I don't want them to be in the impression that we don't appreciate how hard they're working to help us out.
And honestly, this is how we've twice gotten legislative priorities picked up because of Camila Lynetti's work. I'm not going to lie, you've always been on the Legislative Committee, and your work is incredible, and so.
Well, and this is a case where you have some excellent folks with Bobby Jamison, and it's folks that they do, and they know how to do this, they can talk about it. And obviously, Olivia, and I have attorneys on my staff who work very hard, but there is a group of people, and I, I don't want to lose that working relationship with the courts because one locality is having a problem with maybe one particular judge. But what they're not seeing is the bigger picture, which is what you're pointing out. There is an accreditation problem, which is tied into regulations that we're trying, and the school, and the courts, and nobody's looking at how they work together. That's what needs to be identified.
That is one hundred percent.
Ms. Manning.
Yeah, and that's what I, I was going to kind of add the accreditation piece to this, you know, and, I mean, I, I do believe that we have to do our, our part to try to get kids to come to school, and we can't just overlook them not being there. I also don't feel that we should be held, held responsible for parents not making sure their kids get to school. And so I, I, what, Ms. Melnick? It's not in the language right here.
It's in there that, it says.
It's not in the actual language of the new proposed legislation that's underlined.
However, to hold schools accountable through accreditation for issues outside of school control is unfair and punishes schools for decisions that, that rest outside school control. The V S B A should.
Where is this?
It's right under rationale.
No, I'm saying, so the only thing that we're voting on is the underlined portion. So that's not in there. So I would like to see, you know, us address that part as well and, and put it in there. And, you know, I.
Right, because basically what they're also asking for is standardized procedure within the court system.
Well, I'm not asked, for me, it's not related to the court system as much as it is related to, I don't think that we should be held accountable for, when we have done our part, we shouldn't be held accountable for students who aren't coming to school. Because honestly, it, it also punishes the kids who are coming to school. I remember right after COVID, my sons were missing school because, you know, maybe they had a cough or something like that, and I didn't want to send them to school. And I, I remember getting a letter home, and my kids had great attendance. I got a letter home, your, your kids are going to flunk out of school if they don't show up for school. And I know that we're required to send those letters, but I don't think that's fair. So those are the types of things that I would like this type of legislation.
The flip side of parental control is parental participation. And so that is actually what the, the order is, truancy is actually parental participation order. You should be, you should not be held accountable after you've completed what you're required to do, because you have no control after that, you're at the mercy of the system. And that adds days and months to what you have. So that's the flip side of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Come on, can I ask a question?
So, um, I'm also not in favor of the way the underlined section is written. So I, I understand. I can vote again, I can vote no, though, in a few minutes. So that's what, that's what I was just, we're basically voting on the underlined section, okay?
Okay, so we've had our discussion, all that are in.
Ms. Brown.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, I didn't see your hand.
Okay. I'm not in favor of this, the way it's written either. And, you know, I am also, I'm concerned about the potential influence supporting this could have on the relationship that Ms. Lynetti has really worked very hard to develop. I'm also concerned that if this passes the V S B A, that our opinion will, it will, by the packet and the handbook, they will include us as one of those divisions. So I don't know if we need to, you know, make a motion to make sure that they know that that's not our position on the underlined portion, so that you can tell them afterwards that we don't want to be included or if we're planning to do that at a later date. But I do think that if this board does not believe we should be included, that we need to make sure that we notify them that that's not Virginia Beach School Board's position either. So, huh? Do we need a motion to do that, though? No?
It's like with any other board, when the majority rules, they move forward with it. And I promise you, this is going to get picked up by somebody. We're just, again, light years ahead of so many divisions, and that's the problem.
So the handbook says that if you're in the minority side, they include your school division as somebody that supports it, unless they are notified that your division does not support that. And so what I'm, what I'm trying to indicate is that if that may hamper that relationship, that we need to make sure that the Virginia Beach School Board is not included in the V S B A's list. And so I don't know if we need to move that you need to follow up with them as outlined here or if you could just do that.
I will, I will speak to the Assembly and say that specifically, and then I'll, I'll just follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? I'll do both. Okay, are we good? Okay. So all that are in favor of proposal number four, please raise your hand.
We have zero ayes.
All that are against, please raise your hand.
And we have ten nays, so it did not pass.
So Ms. Lynetti, I'm going to need you to give me some language that I can share on the floor that day, specifically, okay? I mean, I've written some things down, but it doesn't have to be something long, just, okay? Thank you. Okay. So we are now on D, the Strategic Ad-Hoc Committee Assignments, okay? I call for a motion to approve the Strategic Ad-Hoc Committee Assignments. And second, moved by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Owens. Is there any discussion on this? Ms. Brown.
So the strategic plan, I, a lot of people in this room already know that. It's a really significant undertaking for the division. For people that are watching, if you look behind us even on the walls and down the halls here, we have Compass twenty to twenty-five. It's a five-year plan, and I do. we have Compass 20 to 25, it's a five-year plan, and I do appreciate all the work that's gone into, you know, assembling the committee, but I do have some concerns about the fact that the process for selecting students, and parents in particular, you know, obviously the police chief is a, a no-brainer there. But I would just like to see in the future a balanced selection approach where I maybe can have more, more voices have the opportunity. So I'm not going to be able to support this today, for that reason, I just wanted to let you guys know, thank you.
Ms. Manning.
So I share Ms. Brown's concerns. What I like about those who've been chosen is it seems to be from a variety of different backgrounds and skill sets. I know many of them on the sheet, and I, I think that they would be good. However, in the future, when we're selecting committees like this, that are basically advising the school board, I think that the school board should have some input on who serves on that committee, and we should be asked, maybe each of us, you know, get, give a recommendation of, of who, who serves. So, I'm going to support it this time, but I, in the future, when we have committees like this, I really feel it's important for the elected officials to be able to choose people who serve on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick.
And so I'm just going to, I'm just going to say the exact opposite, I actually, I, I actually trust, I trust your work, I know I have people whispering in my ears right now, I trust your work. You do this work, you've been doing Compass, I know that's your goal, is to get people to say Compass to 20, 25 exceptionally well. This is, as Mrs. Brown said, no small undertaking, this is huge, and you have chosen a great group of people who are committed to the work from now until, until you're done, and sometimes we need to release ourselves of every single responsibility in this school division, and that we give it to the people who do the work, and so I trust you, and I know a lot of the people on this list too, and I know that a lot of good work is going to happen.
Mr. Culpepper.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I do have to say, I'm going to vote against this, it's got nothing to do with whether I trust you or don't trust you, it's just because I feel like this is a process foul. And it doesn't, doesn't even necessarily have anything to do with the board, I mean, this is a, this is a public event, essentially. And lots of people are participating, this was both inside and outside of the division, and it's important. And it feels to me like, you know, not that, not that anything is dishonest, I don't think that at all, but that essentially the board has offered a fait accompli, yes or no, with no opportunity to participate, and offer direction on something as, as significant as this. So, it's got nothing to do with whether I trust you or don't, I do, and I'm sure you did a great job, I know you did a great job, and I'm sure it'll all work out fine. But I have to vote no, because I got to make the point that the next time we do this, I think this needs to be discussed more openly earlier.
Anybody else? Ms. Franklin.
Dr. Manick, good job. And, in my personal opinion, that's why we have two board members that are part of this group as well, so that we can make sure that we have public input to the board members that are going to be part of this, you know, undertaking, and so I'm going to vote yes, thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I was a part of this when we did Compass to 2020, and you were a part of it then. And, I mean, I was on the committee then, as one of the two board members. And I will tell you that the work that, that happens, a lot of it happens in the committee, we do, a lot of discussion happens, it is very time-consuming. But I'll tell you, but the way you handled choosing people this time, I'm very happy with it, and you did a great job, and that's why we have staff that we can depend on. We, as a school board, depend on the work that our staff does, and I commend you for it. And I'm sure that this is going to turn out just as good as 20, as Compass to 2020, and as good as Compass to 2025. Thank you.
And one last thing. Sorry, but I don't, I don't, I don't speak much, and I am going to say something, because I was on Compass 20 to 25. I was very impressed with the people that you chose for that committee. We had a plethora of, plethora, I always say plethora. Sorry, I say it the way I want to say it, you say it the way you want to say it. Of very, community members, that you were very careful with choosing to make sure everybody was committed and represented, so I got to know a lot of those people, and I see them in a lot of areas of our, our community as leaders. So, and I see the same kind of names on this proposal as well, so thank you, and I appreciate that you're doing this, I think that that title that you have earned, doctor, shares that, your knowledge and what you've got to share with us, and I appreciate that you do it for us, thank you. So I will be voting for this. So, all that are in favor of this ad hoc committee, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
All that are against, please raise your hand.
And we have two nays, the motion did pass.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to do our committees, organizations, and board reports, are there any? D? We just did it. Yeah. We just have the D.
We're 16.
Yeah. You have a committee report?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I took a picture of when I wanted to reference here, I'm just trying. So, CAC meeting, I'm trying to find a picture that I took of the agenda here. So, at our CAC meeting this month, we had Mr. Chris Sprouse, who is our Coordinator of Transportation, came to our CAC meeting at the request of the committee, because they wanted to talk with him about special education transportation, and Mr. Sprouse did a fantastic job. He told us that he, right after high school, he did not, he couldn't find a job, you know, found a part-time job, and then he started driving a school bus for the division. Thirty-nine years later, he's still with us, and he's our coordinator for the Transportation Department, and the CAC was very impressed with him, and he was so open, and it's just such a great connection for the committee to have, they do such a fantastic job, so, just wanted to provide that update.
Thank you for sharing that, because he had shared that at the, the Bus Drivers Event that, that they did in fall, and it was just, I was so impressed with his record, so, thank you for sharing that, Ms. Manning. Ms. Anderson.
The Sister Cities is starting, we're just starting our ambassador for our Sister Cities Ambassador, that we're going to be choosing at some time in March, we haven't actually come up with a complete date yet, because we're trying to get a place that we're planning on having the, the ambassador event happen, so, but it, we are starting, and I will be contacting every single high school, and maybe Ms. Franklin will be helping me, she's planning on helping me, but we will be contacting every high school, because it's very important that we have students who are interested in, in participating in this, because there is a $2,500 scholarship that we give out to the winners of the ambassador, so it's, it's important, and we only, we're, we're only taking students who are in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, because the people who do participate and are vying for this scholarship, they have to be the ambassador for next year, so, when they are, like, if, let's say they're a junior, then when they're, when they're a senior, they would be the ambassador for our city for next year, but, but it could be, it could be a ninth grader who's a 10th grader next year, so, but we, we are not taking seniors, because they'll already be gone, and hopefully gone off to do their thing in colleges and other trade schools. So, but anyway, I will be, I just want, this is basically for all high school principals, you can be expecting a phone call from me, or email in the next, in the next, within the next week, because I plan on visiting and talking with the counselor as well, as well as other people in the building who will have something to do with recruiting students to be part, to be a part of this ambassador.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
I was just going to piggyback on, y'all were talking about Mr. Sprouse, and he was our first, he's been our favorite bus driver, he was my first bus driver that drove two of my children to elementary school. So I was just going to comment. That's neat, though, just to see, you know, where he is today, yeah, and how he started.
Okay, so, now we're going to return to the informal workshop in our closed session. So I'm going to ask the Vice Chair to read and to close session.
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law, step forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711 Part A, paragraphs 1, 2, 7, and 8, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters, or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student and of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parent or legal guardian shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting. If such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened, or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on the matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on any matter, namely to discuss A, status of pending employee discipline and student complaint discipline cases, B, appointments of certain staff members, C, consultation with legal counsel concerning new executive order, D, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, E, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
So I have a second, Ms. Melnick. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of going into closed session, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, the motion did pass.
Okay, we're now in closed session. Reconvening from the closed session. And Vice Chair Williams, please read our certification.
Whereas the school board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay. So, I need a vote to move out of closed session. All in favor, please raise your hand.
I'll, I'll just make the motion.
Yeah, she made the motion and she seconded it.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, the motion did pass, but certification of closed.
Okay. We are now dismissed.